Good evening, I'd like to call the May 12th meeting of the Franklin Board of Education to order. The meeting has been properly posted. Can we have a roll call, please, Mrs. Larson?
Yes. Mr. Sprague?
Here.
Mrs. Witkowski?
Here.
Mr. Alexandrovich?
Here.
Mrs. Sapursky?
Here.
Dr. Kahn?
Here.
Dr. Beer?
Here.
We are all present.
Thank you. I'd like, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Our community comment, normally participants under this agenda item, excuse me, participants under this agenda item must limit their statements to three minutes with the maximum of fifteen minutes for any and all comment. If community comment is related to an agenda item, the board may respond to that comment either at the end of the community comment session or during the discussion of that agenda item. The board may not discuss a comment or question that does not relate to an agenda item per Board Policy 8300. There are quite a few people here that want to make a comment. I would ask for consensus of the board, maybe we could have an extra half an hour for community comment.
Sounds good.
Yes.
Great. So, community comment is now started. Would anybody like to start? Will you get up here, please state your name, and also write it down on that sheet and your address?
Andre Vesilenko. Ladies and gentlemen, nice to see you here. So, I'm the resident of Franklin, a father of four, and owner of a small business. Being the business owner for ten years, I can easily see everything is business in America. You all know that. Small or big, but everything lives, everything is here, like, lives by the business rules. So my first message is for the people sitting here in front of me. We, we are the owners of this land, of this building, and everything inside it. Through the complicated system of taxes, we are paying you to manage our children's education, and you are managers here. With all respect, you rule this business, not own it, okay? This is by no means a private business, but a public accommodation, just a reminder. Now, I want to address the people behind me. Please always keep in mind what I've just said. They work for you. It's easy to prove. Is anyone here for money? No. If they are not paid, would they come here today? No. You know the answer. So, if you don't like them, find a way to fire them or move your family and your money to another district. It's a simple business strategy even though it's not easy to do. But if you are satisfied with what these people do, stay here, pay your taxes here, advertise them, and live happily. But do not be afraid to raise your head and a voice. Do not beg or ask, but demand. What I demand is that mask policies in school must be removed. Not optional, but removed. Because it looks like throwing a bone to us, okay? First, first, that only raises a huge bullying problem. Like, you know, detentions in some schools, citations, everybody knows what I'm talking about. Second, and it's always been like that, if you are sick or afraid to get sick, stay home, simply as it is. Don't say you're ignorant by not wearing a mask. We did our homework. We know what we do. Now, please you learn about masks, how harmful they are. You only know CDC and Health Department recommendations but know nothing beyond it. You saw three words, masks, social distancing, but didn't pay your attention to the rest where it says "recommendation." It's not a law, it's not a mandate, or an order. You must not follow and require our kids to follow that recommendation. It's not obligation for you, neither for us. So please do your job, follow recommendations, but don't forget about common sense. We the people, and we know our rights. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jonathan Wickman, and I'm here standing with the parents of Franklin, standing against this mask mandate. I'm happy that we pledged allegiance to the flag today, but in the same way, we're making a mockery of it because we're here debating personal freedom of liberty, the freedom of choice. On March 31st, 2021, the Wisconsin Supreme Court ended Governor Tony Evers' illegal public health emergency orders. We are no longer under that. His suggestion regarding masks also has gone away. The Supreme Court stated that Tony Evers overstepped his authority in this matter, and I'm here to tell you, the board, that so are you. I want to address a few critical points. For a sixty-day public health emergency to be declared, you have to show proof that there actually is a public health emergency. There is not. Under emergency use authorization, the product of this mask must be optional to our children. Again, under public health accommodation law, you cannot discriminate or deny access to students that wish to come to school without a mask. Also, Wisconsin Statute 118.13, any public school official, employer, or teacher who intentionally engages in conduct which discriminates against a person or causes a person to be denied rights can be fined up to $1,000. You guys have a responsibility to do the right thing, to follow the Constitution and the rule of law. You are not above it. Also, we have health risk. We've seen the videos of student athletes that are running with a mask on, passing out, falling, almost hitting their heads, causing concussions. It should be left up to personal choice, and that's the end of it. So I'm here again to stand with the parents, to tell you to do the right thing. You are beholden to us. We are the taxpayer, not the other way around. Remember that, and follow your duty. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for allowing this extra time and this extra space. I have a few points. My name's Walter, and I was here approximately two weeks ago when this started. At that time, I came by myself, nervous as I am today to speak to you guys in public because I don't do this, I ain't here for the fanfare, I ain't here for the media, I'm not even on social media, I don't care what those people say, I'm here for my family, okay? And I came by myself after that meeting, I met about ten people, and now I look behind me, we've got more. And I'm proud of what we started here, and I want to continue this movement, and it's not against you guys, it's for our children, okay? And it's also not just my children, the children of Franklin, but we've seen the videos now of that child who's on an airplane because his whole family's kicked off the airplane because he might take off his mask. Is this the society we want to leave and lead our children into, that we are afraid of a virus, of a cold? Seriously, let's take this serious. The New York Times, or your email stated that you are following recommendations from the Pediatrics Associations, from the Department of Health in Wisconsin. I've looked up those websites, and they all lead you to the CDC recommendations. Do we really want to believe in the CDC nowadays?
No.
An article came out just yesterday from the New York Times stating that ten percent, the CDC says ten percent of transmissions happen outside, or less than ten percent. When you actually look past the headline and actually read the article, which most people do not do nowadays, it goes down to say even less than one percent, or .01% of transmissions are happening outside. Yet, where CDC is saying our kids need to wear masks outside during the summer. And when you look even further into that, it was a study from Singapore that looked at adults that were working on a construction site indoors. So why? Why are they misleading us? Because the CDC has an agenda, they have a job, their job is to scare us because that's their whole job, is to find diseases. If this disease goes away, so does their public fame. Nobody will care about Dr. Fauci, the guy who now has a bobblehead, a book written after him. Nobody will care, okay? The CDC, it's all a power grab, it's power control, they love it, they're in the spotlight. He is on TV every day. We are also told that these masks are mitigation. I had to look that word up, and what it says is that we're doing this to help prevent something. But what are we preventing? A disease that we know that does not affect our children, and when it does, it's very mild, it's cold-like symptoms, all right? And, and then we get the runaround of, well, masks are not a medical device. But then, when my kid gets sent to school, they're being asked for a medical note. Where are we then? Are they medical? Are we doing this because it's recommended that it's medical? Are we doing this because we're just scared? We gave you a year to figure this out, we were all scared in the beginning, but now we know this does not affect our children, let's move on. Don't play with my kid's psychological mind that they're masked all day long and now they're afraid to take it off after a year. Franklin also used to send out every, every week, every Friday, they would scare the parents with this color-coded red, yellow, green chart, the COVID dashboard. And it was scary at first, all these kids had COVID, all these kids were quarantined. Last Friday, the stat said two cases. Two cases in the whole district. And I'm pretty sure those two kids are just fine. And also, why is it now every two weeks? Why isn't it every week? Why aren't we showing that this is going away? And it's at the bottom of the page because we know this is going away. So, we're going to hear a lot of speakers today, a lot of emotion, but I'm going to go back to, if you have kids, or you ever talked to a kid, what's the biggest, the funniest question they ask you, and sometimes the most scariest? Why? Why, why, why? After all this is done, please take a step back in your life, as a board member, as a doctor, whatever job you have, and ask yourself, why? Why are we doing this to our children? We know that it does not affect our children, it's going down, we're putting kids in masks. Let's take the emotion, let's take the political game out of this, please take a step back and ask yourselves, why? Thank you.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Even in the back?
Yeah.
Thank you. My name is Kevin Fisher, I live at 4930 West Woodland Drive. I've been a resident of the Franklin School District for twenty-nine years, and my twelve-year-old daughter is also here tonight, she wanted to come. There she is waving. And she is a proud student of this very school, and who wouldn't love this school, it's phenomenal. So here we are again, just like we were a couple of weeks ago. And we all wish we were somewhere else, as I'm sure you do, because you have more pressing business, like trying to decide who's going to bring the potato salad to your school board retreat. When we last met, I said I hope you'd listen. But you haven't, so we're back. And I hope that you will pay us your undivided attention. The video is out of the last school board meeting, I haven't watched it all that carefully. Some did, some saw some of you tuning us out as you worked on your computers, et cetera. I hope that you will pay more attention to all of us here this evening because we have important things to convey to you. Mike Sprague, brand-new school board president. After our last meeting, you received some emails from parents who were at the school board meeting. They respectfully, politely asked you to place the mask issue on a future agenda item. Less than forty-eight hours after receiving those emails, you blithely dismissed them with an insincere, form-letter-type rejection email. Less than forty-eight hours. One of your first actions as school board president of this district, and you probably sat there at your computer thinking, oh, this is great, I'll tell them. How proud you must be, your first action as a school board president. Your term is not off to a rollicking start. And you didn't just diss those people that wrote you the emails, you dissed all of these folks, and all, the more than six hundred people who signed a petition to get rid of this mask mandate. You blew them off. Hope you're happy with yourself. So why are we complaining? Not everyone in the district agrees with us, I know. There are some people who want to know why we're speaking up now, because after all, the school calendar ends in just a few weeks. Can't you just buck up? Be quiet? Go home? Wait for us to take action? Well, unfortunately, you angered us, you outraged us by saying that masks were not going away, that they'll probably be here this summer, and they will be here for the start of the 21-22 school year. That was enough to bother all of us in this room. That brings me to Judy Miller, who's really running this operation. You are in a tremendous position. Given your stature in the district and your influence over each and every one of these school board members, you could fix this right now. You could fix this immediately. You could tell these board members what to say and do, and they would be there right with you a hundred percent. But it's painstakingly obvious that you won't do that. So we come back again. You are backtracking, Judy Miller. You're playing semantics with people who are pretty sharp. Oh, we never said that the mask mandate would be for all of 2021 or 22. Well, what do you think we're going to think when you put out an edict that we're going to have masks in 2021 through 2022? Now, I was born at night, but I wasn't born last night. To me, that sounds like it's going to be there for the whole school year. And now, when things get a little hot, you come on with your newsletter, oh, we never said that. I don't know what you said, because you never held a press conference, you never held a public meeting, there wasn't a public hearing, there wasn't a survey sent to residents. I got two surveys in two weeks asking me if Kyla was going to take music lessons, but I never heard from you on masks. No endgame. None. When does this mask madness end? None of you are saying. None of you know, and you don't know because you've all been Anthony Fauci-ized. Let's be real, for the most part, we know, for the most part. Kids can't get it, kids can't give it, yet you are so obsessed with muzzling our kids that that's just going to inflict all kinds of physical and psychological damage on them. Kids in this very building have been getting dizzy, they've been vomiting, passing out, and so upset with masks in general, they'd rather not come to what is mostly a very fine school. This is one of the best, my daughter loves it. Back to you, Mike Sprague. While we spoke at the last school board meeting, some of the parents, and the video's out there, some of the parents noticed you spent time fidgeting and adjusting your mask quite a bit while we were speaking, and you could not speak back, speak back to us under your rules, so that allowed you to play with your mask. That was during about a fifteen-to-twenty minute period. Imagine, Mike Sprague, imagine what our children go through each and every day for a full school day, eight hours. If you couldn't handle it, put yourself in their shoes. I don't think you care. Otherwise, you wouldn't hesitate to do what's right for kids who are healthy, they're not sick. Now, you don't have to like what we say, and you don't have to like us. I don't really care about that, and I won't lose any sleep over it. It'd be nice if we could go out and have tea and pastry someday, I'd like that in the future. But that's not what I'm here for. That's not what we're here for. You have to listen respectfully, and at least give us the time of day, and some consideration, and exercise some honest-to-goodness common sense. Lately, we're hearing that, well, you're monitoring everything, you're keeping track, you're looking at data, you'll consider the latest conditions, and you'll get back to us later. Just be patient, we are condescendingly told. And we're like puppy dogs. You pat us on the head, tell us to relax, tell us to trust you, go home and wait. Not good enough, we're not going to do that. So we will, as I close up now, we will monitor situations too. And if you take us for granted and continue to do so, we will continue to explore, I'm just being honest with you, we will continue to explore efforts to recall, some of you. Because enough is enough. This cruel, abusive, unnecessary mask mandate must end. It must go away now. And if you won't at least listen to us and respect us, then we'll just try to find board members that will. Thank you for your extra time.
My, my address is 3676 West Central Avenue. The mask mandate is over and at church and at some stores too. So why isn't it over at the schools? If you don't want a mask, don't wear one. If you do, then do it. I would bet money that at least half, half of everyone at school doesn't like masks, and probably more than half, probably everybody. What is even the point of masks? I mean, everyone coughs and sneezes, and they cover them. I love not to wear masks because then I can actually breathe. I want to go back to normal. We need to become the leading district again. Masks don't really do anything. We also should not have areas at, in certain days for the playground at school. Also outside, we shouldn't have to wear our masks. We also have to wear them in gym when we're still getting all hot. Also, at lunch, we're sitting right next to each other with masks down, talking, and then in the classroom, we have our masks up and we're social distance. Thank you.
Hello, I am Noah Winkie, and I live at 3676 West Central Avenue, here in Franklin. I am one of the kids who your, you as a board, your choice affects. I think that masks should be optional, and I have a lot for that. Like, most, most of the people in this room aren't wearing masks right now, and like my sister just said, at recess, at lunch, we're, we have our masks down, we have our masks, we're talking to each other. At, at gym, here in this school, we're allowed to take them off when we're, when we're running, and we run next to each other. Yet, we can't have it in the classroom, we have to be apart, we can only stay at our spots. Makes no sense. Like, I am, and me and my friend, me and my friends, family, everyone who goes to school here, at the elementary schools and at the high school, we are the ones who are affected by what you decide. We are the ones who have to wear a mask for almost eight hours a day, and even more if we have an after-school activity. And, and I have a suggestion, if, if you, like, I heard that guy back there, he said that you were having trouble wearing your mask. I think that if you're having trouble with that for this short time, we should, think about how much trouble we're having wearing it for eight hours a day with almost no breaks.
Hi, my name is Lindsay Hayes, and I am here, I'm going to remit just real quick, I'm here as obviously a mother, as a K-5 student, and I appreciate your time and consideration in being here. I have always supported the Franklin Public School District. I went to school here, K-5 through 12th grade. I chose to remain living in Franklin because it is a superior city within, among others, within Milwaukee County. And I've always been very vocal about my appreciation towards my daughter's school, the superintendent, principal, and the teachers. My daughter's had in her two, well, not two years because of all of this, but you know, two years at school, technically, suppose. So I do thank you for keeping the schools open, that was obviously the goal. That was obviously the goal. However, and I'm not one to nitpick or constantly bother anybody on how they do their job because I don't want that done for me, however, when the quality of my daughter's health or her education comes into play, I can no longer just sit on the sidelines and watch this unfold any longer. So I am begging you to please change the mandatory mask-wearing for next school year to optional, as other people have already stated. Being a little redundant here, but there's no public health emergency any longer, there's no mask mandate period, and it's unconstitutional. My daughter is not sick nor is she a threat to others. If she is sick, I will keep her home as any responsible parent does. I don't see the fairness in requiring healthy children to wear medical devices on their faces when this virus is not a danger to them or the staff around them who've had the opportunity to be vaccinated if they chose to. It seems very extreme, confusing, and completely unnecessary for our children. Since wearing the mask, my daughter has had a lot of side effects, adverse side effects. She has had heightened anxiety since the start of the school year due to the mask and won't even sleep in her own bed anymore. She has nightmares, and I'm struggling as a mother because I'm thinking, "Why is she having these?" She's always been very vibrant, very outgoing, not timid at all. However, I'm feeling like she's stifled, she can't put this into words, but she's stifled, she's feeling trapped. Her whole being has changed, and watching this happen and knowing you guys have this opportunity to make a different decision about this, that's why I'm here, and that's why we're all here. Everybody behind me is here for this reason, and people who aren't here as well but also feel this way. It's ridiculous that I'm seeing this in her, and like I said, she's feeling stifled, trapped, and she's being told all these unnecessary and bizarre rules about COVID and what it does and what it doesn't do, and being told, "Do this, do that," all day long in regards to this virus that's just, it's not even right or normal. It's scary. It's scary and it's wrong for a child to be made to believe that they are potentially sick or a threat to others when they're not sick. They're defenseless, and it's a toxic mindset. This has been stifling children's abilities to build friendships, play with each other, read facial cues. This is damaging to her and many other students' social-emotional growth, and I know that's something that Franklin Public Schools is very, very big on, and I love that, but it's falling, it's not happening anymore. My daughter also noted being forced to wear masks all day, especially in gym class and at recess. She says, "Mommy, I can't breathe. Mommy, what can you do? Fight for me, mommy." And I don't know what to do, because I've been very supportive, I haven't said anything until now, because I was going to ride the year out, like most parents, but then hearing it's going into next year, it's, I can't do this anymore, it's my daughter. I'll wear a mask if I'm forced to, at my place of employment, I don't want to, I don't agree with it, I'll do it, but my daughter, I shouldn't have to go through this anymore. And these children, these people's children as well. Also, my daughter has an IEP for speech. Along with many other damaging factors, studies have shown that children with undeveloped speech are suffering from having to wear this mask. Seeing as my daughter is a special education student, she should have been exempt from wearing the mask and should have been all year. It's bad enough she can't see how other people are forming the words that come out of their mouth, as this is something that would greatly strengthen her speech, but her own speech has been stifled by the mask, further discouraging her development while trying to reach her IEP goals and causing further confidence issues among her peers whose now their speech is more advanced than hers. My daughter's speech teacher, by the way, took it into her own hands to tie knots around the ends of my daughter's mask in speech class on Friday, April 23rd, in order to tighten it. I did not appreciate that. While I appreciate everything this teacher has done for my daughter, and I greatly respect the work she's done with her, I felt she had no business doing this without my permission. I sent my daughter to school in that very mask, and this woman, who is not her mother nor is she responsible for making health decisions for my daughter while I'm not there, had the audacity to tighten it, so she couldn't breathe, even, making her struggle even more to breathe. If the staff are so concerned about spreading germs, how is it okay for this teacher to take my daughter's mask with her own hands, tie the knots, and then put it back on my daughter's face? Also, isn't speech class where students are trying to make progress with their language barriers? Therefore, tightening the mask on my daughter's face is not only a violation of my daughter's rights, but it's holding her back from these IEP goals that she is trying to attain. None of this makes sense anymore. What also makes no sense is that I've requested an exemption form due to religious reasons, and I was told that there's not one by Dr. Miller. Isn't this discrimination and against the law? Why don't religious freedoms matter? Unconstitutional, and it doesn't make sense to me. On top of that, it is bizarre the school board sneakily decided on masks for next year without consulting parents who pay very, very high taxes to live in a nice city where we felt their opinions were valued and heard, voices were heard. But the survey was just virtual in person. Why wasn't it asked about how we felt sending our children once again for 35 hours wearing a mask, every single day, next year again? Can't even take them off at recess or gym. This sounds more like jail, not an educational facility. There have been cases of children who've died in gym class due to wearing a mask and not getting the proper oxygen that they need. I feel this is complete child abuse. On top of that, I don't understand why we're going ahead with this, so in many, many other districts are canceling the mask altogether or saying optional by this point. I do not want my daughter to continue to be held back in her speech any longer or have any more anxiety. If I do choose this under school without a mask at this point on, it is a public education, not a privately-owned store business. She cannot legally be denied her right to in-person education. I've done my research on our rights, and there's nothing stating that anybody can force a child to wear a medical mask in school. Us residents who choose Franklin due to their excellent school district system, our school system, will unfortunately be leaving due to this political game that is being played with our children's lives. Thank you for taking the time to listen, and I do appreciate all you guys do. Thank you.
My daughter actually said she wants to speak, I didn't know she wanted to speak. Okay, I guess she doesn't want to say something. Sorry.
Hello, I'm Tamra Brob Schmidt, I reside at 8320 South River Terrace Drive. I recognize that when the district plan was made for 2021-22, the academic year, that the main focus was on how to provide instruction in the upcoming year. The biggest question really was, was it feasible to provide virtual instructions to all families that requested it? Seeing the numbers, it showed that this would definitely not be financially in the best decision to offer it to all who requested it. Because of this, I support the decision that virtual be made only available to students who have a documented medical condition. So now, the focus remains, how many of the virtual students who don't have a medical condition will Franklin lose by not providing this option? If we don't follow the Franklin Medical Advisory Council's recommendation that have students use masks, these current virtual families with a student without a medical condition will not feel comfortable, and so will explore other school options. They'll explore options outside of our district. I'm sure every school board member knows, as well as administration present here, but I don't think the general public knows this, when a student leaves the district, where they reside, and choose to go to another district, that student takes $8,000 from our district. This is the cost of open enrollment in our district. So if the district doesn't provide a sense that safety measures will be followed as recommended, we risk losing students and $8,000 for each student who would have otherwise enrolled in Franklin Public Schools. So if that's 100 students, that's $800,000. So for those of you who are present, are you willing to increase your school taxes to continue to provide the current level of resources? Or are you willing to lose services, perhaps class offerings, sports, or activities? Because if there is an exodus of students leaving because they aren't comfortable that safety protocols are in place and followed, you can expect to have cuts. For this reason, I support the recommendations of requiring the use of masks in schools. Thank you for your time.
Yes, I remember talking to Tamra after a meeting a few months ago outside when I got scolded for not wearing a mask, so I do remember that. Anyway, hi, Mike. Hello, everybody. Thanks for having us tonight. My name is Steve Wamser, I'm a longtime Franklin resident. I've got three kids in the Franklin School Districts, grade school, middle school, and high school, and yeah, I understand what the previous speaker had mentioned. Obviously, if you lose students, you lose revenue, and then maybe we cut some teachers or some principals or something else, and that's the way that you have to run the business. So you may be at risk of losing students to send them to private school because, like the people here tonight, you might lose some of those kids. My wife's sister has three kids in South Milwaukee School District, and they were virtual all, most of the year, and she actually pulled them out, and now they go to, I believe it's St. John's in Oak Creek. So yeah, they lost, I don't know what South Milwaukee loses, but of course, you're at risk. That doesn't mean, you still have to make the right decision, you guys were all voted in for various reasons, right? So anyway, just following up on the previous person's speech, I do think, as ever, most people here agree that masks should be optional. You guys probably actually agree with that outside of here, I would think. You guys probably all want to take off your masks right now, but before I get going, I won't waste too much of your time here because I know I'm repeating what a lot of people said previously, but I was, I have to give you a big kudos and a thumbs up for keeping the kids in school this year. You got that right, and that was, that was a tough decision for all you guys, and for Mike and Dr. Judy Miller, and I know you've got a lot of newcomers on the board, but that was a big thing that you did. Oak Creek Franklin District blundered that whole thing. City of Milwaukee School District, the kids that need to be in school, they blundered it all year, but you know, so kudos to you for having the kids in school and being a leader in that category. Now it's time to take some more steps, which is what everybody here is trying to say. Not only to make masks optional for next year, they should be optional right now, frankly. I mean, anybody, anyone here that wants, over 16, that wants to be vaccinated, either has been or can be, and you can wear two masks if you want. If you want to wear a mask, wear a mask, you know? Sure, masks, if masks work, then whoever's not comfortable can wear them, and so frankly, when you talk about virtual school, you gave that option to everybody this year. I have no idea what that cost the taxpayers, probably more than $800,000 though, if we were to lose 100 students. I don't know, you'd have to speak to that, but yeah, so my point is, good job keeping the schools open. It's time to pivot and change your policies now, and I understand you've got pressures, but the only pressure that you have is from the schools and colleges. These are the only people wanting to keep the country closed and quarantining people. You look at weddings, you look at anybody who's died over the past eight months, they're having life celebrations all over the place, all summer long, restaurants are open, bars are open. I haven't worn a mask in months. I went to Costco the other day, walked through the whole place. So you know, I've got a seven-year-old, you know, he's got speech therapy, he doesn't, you know, he missed three months last year. I mean, I think we're at week 62 now of flatten the curve for two weeks, so it's, this has been going on a long time. But it is, the previous speakers have mentioned, it is stunting people's developments. They need to be able to see facial features, they need to be able to read people, they need to be able to speak and touch each other and be humans again. So what I'm urging you guys is to, I'm not on the school board, I don't know, you guys have to figure that out, but you should eliminate the masks. The quarantine thing is nutty too. I've got a 16-year-old daughter, she's healthy as an ox. I was coming here months in a row, three, four months in a row, she was always quarantined. She's been quarantined 10 weeks of school this year. It's preposterous, you know? But you did have them in school, I want to commend you for that. But we really don't need to protect these kids from COVID anymore, and any grownups have protected themselves by wearing masks and getting vaccinated, so it's time to kind of pivot and reopen and get back to normal life. So one more thing. Yesterday, I got a call, my wife got a call, I called back. I had two vice principals from school call me yesterday, Brian and Dave or Bill or John, I don't know, but they called me while I was at work because my daughter's mask was falling below her nose in class. So she sent to the office, and they retied her masks, and Mr. Mellon or Yellen said, "Oh yeah, you can get suspended for not wearing a mask," all this nonsense, and it's gone on too long. So I think you guys see that the people are passionate about getting back to normal life and really focusing on other things, focusing on the school, focusing on the kids, focusing on what you guys all ran for the school board to be elected for, not for this nonsense. So I think if you're going to be looking at, and you should be looking at making masks optional, you should also be looking at loosening the quarantine thing. I can just picture it now, last two weeks of school, two out of the three of my kids are going to be quarantined, you know? So anyway, in closing, I know you guys have a hard job, and you've got a lot of pressure and everything else, but you got to make the right decision. I think you all kind of know what the right decision is to make now, and it's kind of to open up reality. Someone was mentioning stats earlier, but I mean, I don't know how many people are in Wisconsin, but millions have had the vaccine, millions have COVID, the rest of them are kids, who is left? Like, open back up. So thanks for your time, thanks for keeping the district open, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Hi, unfortunately, my name is Karen. I've gotten a lot of bad things about that, but I'm writing it all down so you can see it. I've sent a few of you some very detailed emails, I'm sure you didn't even read them. I wish, before you make any decisions, that you please read the data. This is from, just somebody, just give you a couple excerpts, and that's all I'm going to do. The American Institute for Economic Research says that children do not readily acquire COVID, they do not spread it to other children, teachers are in danger, parents or others at home. It says children do not have the capability, well, it says they don't have these ACE2 receptors in their nostrils, so they don't even get it. CDC's own February 2021 double masking study reported that masking may impede breathing, which can trigger a variety of other problems, including acute anxiety attacks in susceptible individuals. These harms are even more likely to occur in children, particularly smaller children. Now, I've got, like I said, there's a lot of data on my email that I sent you, please read it before you make your decision. I just want you to be informed of what's all going on. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sophia Bennett, and unlike a lot of people here, I attend Franklin Public Schools, and I'm currently a sophomore at Franklin High School, and thus, I will be impacted by the decision you guys make here today. I am here for myself and my friends and for those who could not be here today, the well over 500,000 Americans that could not be here, I mean, because their lives are gone forever. Studies have shown that when schools enforce mask-wearing and social distancing, then children catch COVID-19 at a much lesser rate than the general population. Obviously, masks cannot and do not prevent coronavirus at a 100% success rate. There is not a medical procedure on earth that has a 0% chance of failing. I'm sorry that this speech is going to be a little bit clumsy, I had no intent of speaking when I first arrived, but when I did, I felt that I had to say something. My father is a first-grade teacher at another district. My father is a first-grade teacher at another district. He teaches first graders, and he is so proud of them because they wear their masks all day, every day, and they do not complain over the inconvenience. They live their lives rather normally, in fact. If six and seven-year-olds can comfortably wear a mask all day, then I believe we can ask the rest of this district to do so as well. I have many, many friends who are highly athletic. My best friend is an outstanding gymnast and an accomplished runner for track, and neither she nor the athletes in my friend group have ever complained once about wearing their mask while competing. I have another dear friend who is unable to participate in athletic activities due to her remaining symptoms from when she beat COVID-19 months ago. I myself am currently in training to be a lifeguard, and thus I value the health of other people, all other people, regardless of whether I agree with them or not. I know that the opinions of medical professionals are to be trusted in this matter, so I am grateful that Franklin High, Franklin School District followed the advice of medical professionals and enforced the mask, the wearing of masks in the 2020-2021 school year, and I pray that you decide to enforce the same policy moving forward into the 2021-2022 school year, so long as it is still recommended by medical professionals. If we do this, then I can say that I am proud to be a part of the school that is actively taking steps to protect me and my friends. Thank you.
It works. My name's Tom Wamser. I want to reset the teleprompters from the predecessor that was just up here. I went through the Franklin school system from 1956 through 69, so I'm kind of a loyal Franklin saber through and through. But the reason that I'm here today is I have seven grandchildren, one graduated from Franklin, the other six are second grade through high school, and it's just really depressing to see these kids wear a mask eight hours a day. It's my belief that these masks are doing more harm than good, and I think that you think that, too. I'm a little surprised that there's 14 of you here, and all 14 of you are in lockstep with masks on, every one of you. Do you all think identically? Amazing. Now, you're in leadership positions. We're asking you to take some, make some leadership decisions, make the right decisions. I mean, I can't believe that it's 14 or 15 to nothing to wear masks every day. It's shocking. So as we sit here looking at your faces and your expressions, it's kind of hard to see what they are because I think you're hiding behind your masks. Also, I don't know who you're beholden to. I thought it was supposed to be the constituents, but this man brought up a great idea. I looked at your dossiers in the school board, and you know, you've all done a lot of things, and you've been on committees and community leaders, and I'm sure most of that is really great stuff, but it's time to do some great stuff right now, not the potato salad for the picnic that's coming up, and not, let's do this next fall, let's table this. Do something right away. Do it now, because you should. I appreciate the time you've given us.
I didn't prepare a speech, and I'm gonna try not to get emotional, and I wasn't prepared to speak, but actually, it needs to be said. To all of you guys right here, I'm talking for my family, my three children that are suffering with these masks on. My daughter has had a light concussion, and she's in this mask all day long. Coming home, I have to pick her up, the office called me, she's crying tears, tears, because she cannot handle the headaches because of these masks that are being enhancing her And I can't do anything to help my child. So, and all, and nun, I told her, just take it off, just take it off, and she went into a sheer panic and started crying and said, no, mom, no, I'm not gonna take it off. She was so scared of what you guys have told the staff people and hogwash my child to feel so afraid that she went into sheer panic. This is what you guys have done to our children. So in your next school budget, are you guys ready to play, pay for her therapy that she's going to need after all this is over? That should be into the school budget? Is that what you guys are gonna be discussing with continuing these masks? I have two other children, kindergarten and first grade, and they won't take them off because if, only in school, because if, if my youngest says to the other one, if you take it off in school and you get COVID, you're gonna die. This is what you guys have done to our children, caused fear, intimidation, and this is everything that you guys have caused with all of your decision. And Ms. Judy Miller, you need to figure out which way you're going. You need to figure out your facts, are you gonna go one way or another? Because you're so contradicting in your emails, you contradict your own self, honey. So before you use big words, figure out which way, yes mask or no mask? Because that way, at least we will have a straight answer.
Hello, my name is Jamie Groch, and I'm a new member of the Franklin community. My children are currently attending a neighboring school district that also has a mask mandate, so understood 2020-21 needed a mask mandate. But I am here to express some concerns as we move to Franklin, knowing that this district is a data-driven district. So as I'm here, I'm expressing my concern over the current preparations. As I was looking over the 21-page document, I noticed the best data was not collected and utilized when identifying the mitigation plan for fall. Firstly, I noticed that though the family survey was used in January, it did not mention the use of masks at all. So if I'm here, I kept my student virtual because I didn't want them in a mask, now I said, hey, I do want my child in school. We all know that having our children in school in front of a teacher is gonna be the best for them. I chose, I want my child in school. Now, this mitigation comes out telling me they have to be in a mask. So are we gonna go back and say, hey, what's the new look like for those kids that want to be virtual without a mask? Because that's gonna change the amount of money that you have to spend. So I'm asking, hey, are we gonna have another survey coming out mentioning masks? In addition, there are no parameters set on these mitigations, practices, and when will they be lifted? So currently, this plan reads, our children will continue to be in masks and socially divided, or as it says in the plan, assigned seating, until who knows? You may ask why I'm so against my children wearing masks. Well, outside of my writing skills, I am hardly sarcastic. My children are very sarcastic as well, and intellectual quality I'm very proud of, because if you didn't know, being sarcastic means you have a higher IQ, but you know, okay, whatever. Unfortunately, communication with developing children is limited when your facial expressions are covered. So what is the school teaching my K-5 student? The various social cues? Nothing. When a teacher is wearing a mask, how is he to see what her social cue is, and how is she supposed to see what his feelings or his emotions are? So if you can't tell, I'm nervous right now, maybe you can hear it in my voice, but you can't see my face, you can't see what my mouth is doing, and nor can my five-year-old child. So when he's anxious, or he's worried, or he's scared, his teacher can't see that either. So what are we gonna do? He can't vocalize his emotion yet, so he sits there and he acts out, and then we get called to the principal's office. So it's just a continuing cycle because the social cues he can't see, and neither can the teacher, so he gets frustrated, and what does he do? He acts out. Finally, I feel like having the Franklin student body, although we do have a student here that expressed her concern, is hypocrisy. As our community, the city of Franklin itself is just asking us to wear masks when we go to City Hall. The Health Department only is recommending it as of March 31st, wearing masks. In addition, a large amount of our student body is outside of the community playing sports and/or visiting establishments that are not wearing masks. And if you would like a couple locations, Bridgewater Performance, Princeton Club, the soccer clubs located here in Franklin, as well as the Franklin Little League that they're playing right now without masks, and just to let you know, they are promoted by the Franklin Recreation Department. So as a parent, what do I want? I want more data, I want input from the parents. Obviously, you guys moved it here to the middle school, so you knew you were gonna have a crowd, yet, blah, 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 blah. If masks are gonna be a part of the plan, will a dashboard be provided so families will know when these assigned seats and when masks will be removed? That way, we have an idea, we have a clear vision of, hey, if we can get our numbers below 5%, let's say, 1%, right now, we're at .3, we don't have to wear masks. Our kids can sit with their friends at lunch and be okay with it. They can play a ball, and they don't have to worry about recess and not being able to play with each other, or having to wash their hands every two seconds when the ball is passed in basketball. But give us something that we can look forward to, instead of automatically just saying, hey, 2020-2021 is another redo, and 2122. Thank you.
Excuse me, but show of hands, how many more people wish to speak? All right, four more people? Thank you.
I'll make this quick. Good evening, I'm once again, oop, sorry, Michelle Winkie, parent of three children at Southwood Glen and here at Forest Park. Good evening, I'm once again speaking out on the district's overreaching of masking our children this fall. I've requested a couple times that this be added to the agenda, which has been denied and ignored. The latest one, I emailed Mike Sprague asking as the president to make a motion to put it on the agenda, and I've not got a response. So, Mr. Sprague, I'm gonna talk to you for a second. Last meeting you shared about attending a virtual national convention or conference, and you expressed, and I'm gonna quote this, "It seems our district got through COVID better than 99% of the other districts, got through. I know it's not gone, but we did a good job." And you said, quote, "And I hope we will continue to lead that," end quote. How are we leading it getting through COVID, Mr. Sprague? We are standing still, if not going backwards. We are not leading by masking our children while other Wisconsin districts are unmasking their children. Even Florida and South Carolina are unmasking all their children by executive order of their government leadership. Last year was a guessing game when making the recommendations to have our children attend school in person. I told my children the protocols the district put in place, including the masking, was so that if a person, so if in-person learning was unsuccessful, there was no would've, could've, should'ves. You guys did everything possible to make it happen and make this year successful, and it has been. We gave you this year wearing masks as one of the protocols, and I am not willing to give you another year of my kids wearing a mask. Where would this overreach stop? What's next? Mandating my kids get an experimental, non-FDA vaccine in order to attend a school maskless? No. Once again, there is a minimal risk of transmission of COVID outdoors, and our younger children are not the super-spreaders. Please make these masks optional for our children inside and outside of these buildings immediately. I cannot subject my children to another year of mask-wearing and another year of government overreaching recommendations. Remove the masks from these children and make it optional for the parents to decide. On a side note, I share this story with you, my youngest son, who just turned eight, he's in second grade. It was raining, I believe it was last Wednesday or Thursday, and I didn't have an umbrella for him, and I told him, take that mask off your face from the car to the overhang, maybe 30 yards. That boy was so scared, I had to fight him to take that mask off so it didn't get damp, because he did not understand a damp mask is going to be a hard thing to breathe through the rest of that day. And I saw my son take that mask and put it in his pocket and run as fast as he could to get to that overhang because he was so afraid of breaking your rules. That is what you did to my child. You made him scared to come to school, and I know as his mother that that was the proper thing, not to wear that mask in the outdoor rain so that he could breathe. But I digress. I am finished, and I still do love this school district, but I am not giving my kids you in masks for another year. I cannot do it, and I assume a lot of parents cannot do it. Thank you for your time.
My name is Dave Turzis. I've lived in Franklin as a taxpayer for 44 years. My kids went to the Franklin school system, my grandkids go to the Franklin school system. And after everything I've heard today, I honestly, I had notes, I didn't take them out, could make it real short, I have almost nothing to add, except I back everything everybody said, except for two people. And I sent off seven emails this week to the board members, by the way. Five of you answered me, and two of you didn't bother to answer me, okay? I don't know, I don't know where everybody is, but there was a Linda and an Ellen, wherever you are, you did not bother answering my email, okay? Just so you know. I see the negative effects of the masks on my grandkids, and we no longer are gonna do this, okay? So you board members, you need to make the decision. My answer to those who want masks, let them wear them. I don't care, let them wear the mask, but at worst, it's gotta be optional. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Jeremy. Sorry, nervous, but I don't envy your position right now, but you guys can make it a lot easier on yourselves. A rebuttal to the what if 100 kids don't come to school next year because of that you don't have to wear a mask? What if 200 kids don't come to school because they do have to wear masks? Now you're losing 1.6 million. Eighty percent of students are in school this year, or 79. something, sorry. Data, we all hear about data, and your medical advisory team, are they using data? If so, I'm still waiting for an answer on the number, because right now, in all of Franklin, we have a .05% positive rate for COVID, .05%. That's on the Franklin dashboard, you can check it, 16 positives out of 34,500 people. The burden rate is 99 out of 100,000, which is .099%. So if we're waiting for the numbers to get lower, how much lower? What's our number? You guys smarter than me. And if we are following the data, and this is data we're using, we should be embarrassed we're all here right now. By now, anyone that wants to be vaccinated has had the chance. If the masks work and you want to wear it and you're scared, wear it, no judgment from us, but don't put your fear onto our kids. And I just, I just want to end by saying masking children is not trusting the science, it is psychological child abuse, and right now, everyone's guilty of it.
Hello, my name is Cheryl Turzis, and I've lived in Franklin for 42 years, as my husband has said. I was always proud of this school system. My kids grew up in it, played sports in it, and was very happy about it. But now, since COVID, and I'm not saying it wasn't scary when it first started, when we all had to shut down the schools, let's, you know, bend the curve, let's do what we can. We did all that, and we did it, you know, willingly, but when it went on and on and on, it's dividing our country, you know? There's mass shaming, you know? And even like the kids are afraid to take it off, sometimes when I go in a store, it's like people are looking at you because you don't have your mask a certain way, you know? It's all become about the mask. So today, my husband and I went to Sam's Club, and I didn't wear my mask, my husband didn't wear our mask. And everybody in there, including kids and little toddlers and babies, got their masks on, other than one gentleman. And you know what? I respect that. I'm not going to mask shame anybody, but I don't want anybody saying she doesn't have a mask on. And when we walked out, the woman who was doing the little receipts, I just had the biggest smile, and I talked to her. She said, "It's so wonderful to see a smile." It's like we haven't smiled anymore. The fear is so great. I see people with two, three masks. I have teenagers. My daughter couldn't even get an exemption for her autistic child. It's like we become, we're living in a world of fear. There should be no fear, there is respect. And we did all that, we did the curve, we did the mask. Everybody can get a vaccine. When are we going to take the masks off? Let's end it. You know, we're just living in fear, we're not enjoying life. God didn't create us to live in fear. You know, the masks aren't going to save you. They're not your savior. We did the mask for a year. Please, let's end it. Let's get it off our children. It kills me as a grandmother to see my five-year-old in a mask. You know, it's hiding her beautiful face. Nobody sees her expression. It's sad. Let's end it now, and if you want to wear them, fine, wear them. But don't mask shame. I've heard people in stores say they hope we die, or you're going to die. You're causing people to die. You protect the elderly. But I'm 70 years old, and I'm not afraid of COVID, because if I get it, I'm going to recover. I'm healthy. I live a healthy lifestyle. So let's get the masks off these healthy, beautiful children. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lori Pandy. I didn't plan on speaking. And I hate speaking in front of people, okay? So this is really tough for me, and, but I'm doing it for my son. I'm sorry. I'm going to try to make it through, because I know I have to. I find it so sad. We're riding our bikes in another neighborhood, and these kids have their masks on. They're playing basketball, and I'm like, what is wrong? Why are they wearing their masks? They can't breathe. Why are they wearing their masks? They're at home. Because they're used to wearing them. They've been at school all day long, and they've been forced to wear the mask by a teacher that's like, you don't have the mask on properly. Get it up on your nose. I've heard this from another high school student. So my son is virtual. I don't know what really goes on, but I do know this other student, and she's told me, teachers want you to wear it properly because they're too scared themselves. So as I said, my son is a virtual student, he's in the first grade, and his teacher is awesome. She's done the best job she can ever do. Her name is Ms. Augustini, and I sing her praises. She's got a whole, like 26 students or 29 students that she was given in the beginning of the year. I don't know how one teacher can manage this number of students, and ages six and seven, mind you. But she's done it, and she's done a remarkable job. So I have nothing bad to say about the program. I think it's great. And we were nervous, because we both work, we have full-time jobs, and we signed up to be virtual. And I think people probably wonder, like, how are you going to make that work? I said, "I don't know, but I'm going to do it." And it's worked for us, but it's been extra work. I've got to tell you, I'm trying to do my job plus help my son get through first grade. My son did get accepted into the summer school program, and now I'm wondering, what do I do? I'm not going to send him in a mask. I can't. I have vowed to him that he will never wear a mask if he doesn't have to. There are times I take him in places, and I'm like, no, you're not wearing the mask. Because I don't want it on your face, I want you to be able to breathe. You are not a detriment, you're not going to be causing harm to other people. Children do not cause the Wuhan virus. Let's call it out as it is. This thing came from China people, and they're covering it up. If kids are forced to wear masks in the 2122 school year, we will find another school district. My son came from St. Alphonsus. He was there for his kindergarten year. So we have paid the money, and I didn't have a problem, because I thought I was getting a superior education. It turns out, we were not happy with the program, so we came to the Franklin School District. And we were very pleasantly surprised. We were very happy with the program. You guys have done a great job, and I'm hoping that we can remain here. But if that remains the rule for the 2122 school year, we will not. I will not. And my son knows this. He's like, what are you going to do, Mom? I said, "I'm not sending you there, I will find another option." So we will investigate. If you guys decide that masks are still in place, we will be somewhere else, and you're losing our dollars. So I hope you consider this. I hope you have heard and listened to our stories. And I hope that you, it's not about a number. All these numbers are rigged anyways. I don't know how much you read, you know, besides the mainstream newspapers, if that's what people are following, and the CDC, which is corrupt, and the WHO, and all these other organizations. I'm sad to say that I was, I am proud to be a United States citizen, and I've always loved my country. We have flags flying in our yard. My son wants pinwheels and flags. We have, we ride a bike almost every day, and he's got a flag on his bike. We're the most patriotic people. But I am so sad to see what has happened to this country and how corrupt and terrible it really is. And I've just discovered this recently. So I hope you're not looking at those numbers. I hope you're looking at what's truly happening. These kids are not carriers, not causing issues. And please, look at the other side. There is another side. Thank you.
Good evening. Evgenia Vaslenko here again. Thank you for allowing this extra time today for the parents to speak and to raise their voices on this issue. Just wanted to summarize a little bit. I don't want to repeat the information that has been told already. Recently, there was an update from the Department of Public Instruction, school nurse. And so the words were, for those of you needing to defend the science and public health recommendations of continued use of masking in schools, here is the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention's recently updated Science Brief on Masks. Usually, but I keep an eye on CDC updates and read there all the due, they recommend on the medical side of the masks. They do not include mental, emotional, or psychological health of kids. Also, just wanted to point out, we are not living in medical authoritarian country. We are republic, and there is many more sides to our lives than just medical side. So we didn't elect our CDC, so, and there is a reason they do not have powers to issue mandates. The governing bodies can issue the mandates based on the recommendations. They cannot enforce the state of emergency anymore because the numbers do not support it. Also, in the same notice from the nurse, it says, "In Wisconsin, it is a local school district board decision to follow or not to follow the CDC and the HHS recommendations." I'd like you to reconsider all the information that you've heard today and take this into account as well. I've sent at least three emails to Mr. Sprague and a couple of emails to Dr. Mueller. I appreciate your attention and that you read the emails and actually got back to me. I was a little bit confused by the contradictory information that was coming from both of you. I've talked to some parents, and they pointed out that they got a reply that masks are mandatory, but Dr. Judy Mueller, she admitted in her email and actually confirmed there are no mandates. And you are following their recommendations and guidelines, which I can say, I've talked to my personal doctor, and I've heard from other parents too, that their doctors do not believe in masks. Neither do they trust this vaccine that is coming. You've been building your mask mandates or like enforcing their recommendations around the vaccines. I understand this is to protect kids, and those are most vulnerable will not be even getting the vaccine, because their health, if they are immunocompromised, the vaccines are not good for them. So I don't know what it comes to, like, my kids are not going to get this experimental gene therapy shot. I've investigated it enough to understand that healthy kids and healthy adults do not need it. Our immune systems are strong enough to fight this virus with mild symptoms. I know, we always talk about six, almost like 567,000 people we've lost. This is tragic. This is, this is very sad. But we all know that those people are usually elderly people, people with chronic conditions. Why don't we talk about 26 million and almost 700 people who recovered after this virus and continue their lives with antibodies that they have in their beautiful, created by nature bodies? So I would like you to, like I said, reconsider this information. Also, I was confused on either if we are using masks on kids as medical devices or non-medical devices. That came from Dr. Mueller. She pointed out that we are not using masks as medical devices. If they are not medical devices, what is the statement? Like, is it a fashion statement? And the mitigation strategy is other steps we are taking, but masks are tools and instruments in this. And I had to doubt myself and look up the definition of medical device, which clearly said, "Medical device is an article, instrument, apparatus, a machine that is used in the prevention, diagnosis, or treatment of illness or disease." I think the masks fall perfectly into this definition as devices for prevention. So we need, please, I ask you to decide if it's a medical device, the legal time for you to be forcing it on kids is over. The mandate is over, it was emergency use authorized. We have a right to refuse. You don't have a right to force it on our kids or on us as adults. If it's a non-medical device, why are we using it for the mitigation strategy to tackle a medical problem and getting recommendations from medical entities and medical bodies like CDC, a medical advisory team, and GHS? Please think about that clear and make a clear statement to our parents. I hope, I really strongly hope that you come to the decision to end the mandatory, or like, I should say, like, you stop enforcing their recommendations, because there are no mandates as per Dr. Mueller. And you, it doesn't take a long time. Please send out this email. That would be amazing to see that email in our inboxes tonight, that our kids can go to school and don't have, and to wear the masks, and nobody's going to harass them, bully them, or ask them what's wrong with them for not wearing a mask, or they should not be at school, as it's happening right now. Because if a child goes to school without a mask, all the kids start bullying. Like, we are bullied by customers in the stores who are not educated on the question of masks. I've been to movements, I've been to different stores, I've been harassed, I've been bullied for not wearing masks. However, I could have had a medical exemption. And people don't even know about this option. So this is sad to see. Thank you for your attention tonight. Yeah, really hoping to see that email in the inbox any time, like today or maybe at least this week. Thank you so much.
Just want to say one more thing along those lines. On the box, it says on a box of masks, it does not protect against COVID-19.
Is there any other, is there any other community comment? I've prepared a statement I'd like to read. Last July, Franklin Public Schools shared its reopening doors plan for the 202021 school year, including instructional options for both in-person and virtual learners. This plan also included mitigation protocols that all individuals in our buildings would follow, including mask-wearing to help slow the transmission of COVID-19. Other protocols included such items as regular sanitation and disinfecting, regular hand washing, contact tracing, ventilation, cohorting of students, illness monitoring, and social distancing to the extent possible. The board and administration remained responsive to changing conditions and community needs, continuing to evolve and change the plan as new information came in throughout the summer. The Board of Education is very proud of all our students and staff for quickly acclimating to our mitigation protocols last fall and continuing to follow them throughout the 202021 school year. Their efforts have, for the most part, kept our schools open and operating safely since September. Aside from the Franklin High School closing for a three-week period in November, all of our buildings have been open for in-person instruction since the first day of school. We are one of the few communities in the area that can proudly say that. As the board and administration considered the protocols that would be in place for the 202122 school year, we considered what we learned throughout this school year, as well as sought advice and recommendations from the CDC, the AAP, and our medical advisory team. District Administration also surveyed families regarding whether they would prefer in-person or virtual programming for our children next fall. After considering all these factors, District Administration developed and presented a plan for the 2122 school year to the Board of Education on April 14th that included instructional plans as well as planned mitigation protocols. During the presentation of the plan, district leaders shared that, shared that based on the information available at that time, Franklin Public Schools would plan to start the 2122 school year requiring masks. District leaders also stated that they would continue to review new information, changing conditions, and additional recommendations leading up to the start of the school year, modifying the plan as needed. Over the last couple of weeks, board members have received emails on both sides of this issue. We continue to review that feedback and work with the district administration on moving forward in the best way possible. Franklin Public Schools has been responsive and adaptive to the ever-changing conditions of the pandemic, and will continue to be through the summer as the next school year approaches. The board and district administration can, excuse me, continue to review what protocols we can safely adapt or lift as conditions continue to improve, including conversations about the use of masks in outdoor spaces as we finish out this year and begin summer school. With only 18 days remaining in the current school year, we are looking forward to completing the school year safely. Throughout the summer, the board will include on their agenda regular updates from district administration on the implementation of the fall instructional plan. We thank all community members for their feedback, information, patience, and understanding as we continue to best guide the district on our planning for the fall. Thank you all for your comments tonight. Item five, consent agenda. Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. School board announcements. Are there any announcements by school board members? School board calendar. Regular Board of Education meeting Wednesday, May 26th at 6:00 p.m. at the ECC. Regular Board of Education meeting Wednesday, June 23rd, 2021 at the ECC at 6:00. Regular Board of Education meeting Wednesday, June 23rd, 2021 at the ECC at six, both at 6:00 PM. Item eight, district administrator update. Dr. Miller.
We have a great staff and I'm pleased to share that many families and parent organizations have reached out to them to let them know how much they're appreciated. Early into COVID-19, we heard a lot about essential workers, those individuals who went to work to care for others. Our staff has been and continues to be essential to our students. We are incredibly grateful for everything they do, particularly this school year. Today is also School Nurses Day and I'd like to publicly thank Lori O'Neal and Molly Call for their work with our staff and families. If you had the opportunity to meet Lori or Molly, you know that they're extremely knowledgeable and compassionate. We're very, very lucky to have them on our staff. I'm also pleased to announce that our dance team has been awarded state champions in jazz and runner-up in Palm. Two young ladies, Tori Texala and Alexi Thorpe were named first team All-State. The district recently completed, completed the process of obtaining an official United States trademark of the Franklin saber. Having the trademark allows us to ensure that it is used only to represent our district. The Senate has passed our bill to ensure that the state report card appropriately represents our school district. The bill will now move on to the assembly. If the bill passes, our district report card will no longer reflect the dropout rates associated with our students who leave the House of Corrections and do not enroll in another school district. Finally, I would like to announce that Dr. Jamie Fekler, principal at Pleasant View Elementary, will be leaving the district after 19 years, 12 of which he spent at Pleasant View, to take a position as the Director of Teaching and Learning, Teaching and Learning Services at Whitefish Bay. I had the honor of hiring Dr. Fekler as he was starting his teaching career in 2001. Not only was Dr. Fekler an incredible teacher and leader, he's an incredibly kind and caring person. We sincerely wish him the best. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Miller? Item nine, reports, presentations, and other school board business. Principal Action Plan. Ben Franklin Elementary, Countrydale Elementary, Robinwood, Ms. Shannon, Ms. LaPlante, and Mr. Nelson.
And they will be projecting behind you.
Good evening Franklin Public School Board members. For those of you who are new to the board, we just wanted to take a moment to introduce ourselves. My name is Mary Shannon and I am the interim principal at Ben Franklin Elementary.
Good evening everybody. I'm Shawna LaPlante and I'm the principal at Countrydale.
Chad Nelson, I'm the principal at Robinwood Elementary.
We are here to share with you information about our buildings and our progress towards our goals. You all had a chance to read our individual reports and as you can see, we have three very different buildings with unique characteristics. Tonight, we want to share with you something that is, that is common throughout our buildings. It is a framework that we have all introduced to our staff to support their work as professional learning communities, or PLCs. Each certified staff member is a part of a professional learning team and for some staff members, they are a part of several teams. Over the course of the school year, teachers have been engaging in learning around ways to become high-performing teams. Highly effective and efficient teams focus on learning and achievement. As principals, we have led our teams through professional development using the phases of PLC work. It is essentially a tool to help teams structure their time together, help guide conversations to, to keep teams effective, efficient, and focused on learning and achievement. When teams come together and plan for instruction, whether it is math or a science module, or reading or writing a unit of study, the phases framework keeps the focus on learning and achievement. We will each define the phases for, we will, excuse me, we will each define the phases for you as we go through our presentation. I'm going to share with you a bit about phase one and how we engaged in learning with this phase as we worked with our teams. Phase one is where we engage in planning and preparation. The work of phase one occurs about two weeks prior to the start of a module or unit of study. The work of this phase builds a common understanding that is essential for the success across a grade level. On a professional development day, we focused only on phase one, learning the questions, learning the questions that drive the conversation to build this common understanding. At Ben Franklin, we use a fishbowl method of teaching to observe one team trying out the work and this method involves the small group holding a conversation while the large group is circled around them, observing, taking notes in preparation to try this work on their own. Following this demonstration, each grade level team would go off and try the work on their own. In the overview of a unit of study, conversations that happened in phase one were modeled by a kindergarten team. That would be that center circle. They worked to build a common understanding of the standards and what students will be able to do at the end of a unit. The team talked about and previewed assessments and the pacing of the unit. Finally, they talked about ways to build excitement for the unit and how to celebrate the work at the end. Again, this common understanding is really essential for the success across the grade level. My kindergarten team provided the whole staff the opportunity to observe phase one in bite-sized steps and offered feedback to teams as they tried the work on their own. Since that PD day, the Ben Franklin staff has continued to learn about the phases and put them into practice during their collaborative team time. My attendance at team meetings offers me the opportunity to provide feedback about the conversations and the work that I am observing.
So after phase one comes phase two, which as you can see it says, Teaching and Studying Student Progress. So this phase occurs shortly after the start of the unit, when teachers have begun to gather data on their students. So bringing this data to collaborative meetings is really the springboard into the discussions around student progress and where are our students currently performing? This phase includes planning for steps to take in order to move students closer to the end of the unit expectations. So after teachers have overviewed the unit, established the big goals of the unit, the next step is to know if students are making progress on those big goals and then developing actions based on the analysis of the student progress. So staff are provided questions as part of this phase work to help them to be reflective and to consider as they go through the, the phase work as a PLC. So one of the questions in phase two relates to really what does student data reveal about our learning? At Robinwood, we have set up this phase and learned really two different ways in relation to looking at student work. You can see some examples up there of student work, of some student assessments. So those are some math exit tickets, which are given daily after a lesson so that we can check where our students are at and making progress on that current lesson and then use those to make decisions, as I'll talk about. And then there's some running records up there as well and that's the retail portion where they're asking about character traits and character feelings. And running records are given formally three times a year to see the progress our kids are making in their, their reading as they progress throughout the year. So one of the first processes we really looked at, at Robinwood, was the ability to just describe the evidence as a team. So before you can really analyze progress as a team, you need to make sure that you are on the same page when you're looking at a, a piece of work. So the teams looked at the same piece of student work and described what that student work told them, allowing for a consistent approach to understanding what a student is able to do and also increasing the inter, inter-rater reliability when scoring so that all teachers on a team are on the same page when they're, they're speaking about student evidence and student expectations. The second process, we focused on when it came to teaching and studying student progress, really focused on themes in the data. So in this process, we separated work into three different piles, looking at, quickly kind of separating into beginning, developing proficient and advanced work, and then describing themes into each work of, again, what students can do based on where they were performing and then based on those different levels, what are our next steps? So then you, jumping into phase three is really refining that instruction to improve student learning. This phase occurs about two-thirds of the way through a unit. Again, teachers will bring in student data, notes, student work to further discuss progress and where to make adjustments for whole class, small groups, and individuals. This process transfers into our collaborative team time and I've chosen some, a third grade team up there, they were a team of two this year. And the reason I chose them as I am observing collaborative time and providing feedback, I noticed that in my feedback, there was a lot about how they were using the student data to make decisions as well as seeing that, that professional learning transfer into their team time. So one question in phase three is, if a student's need has been fully addressed, how could instruction be used to different contexts to deepen student understanding? And this team had used math exit tickets from the first three lessons and what they had noticed collaboratively is that the students, in terms of their unit fraction abilities, were already showing mastery in the first three lessons. So then they were able to use that information to go deeper into learning and push students further as they went through the rest of the unit. And of course, if they noticed students struggling with those concepts, they would be able to then just target in strategy groups or individually as well. This team also used running records and you can kind of see on the right there, a, a tool that was created. So again, the running records information provides them in a retell and in third grade, it's important for students to be able to describe character feelings and traits independently. And they were noticing some areas that they were going to work on with students. So based on their conversations and based on the actual student work, they were going into their character unit and they were looking at like different mid-workshop teach that they could do and also different tools that they had created to help students to move forward in their ability to identify character feelings or, or character traits, either in small groups or strategy groups and tools for the students and for them to use when they were conferring with students or running those strategy groups. So you can see that teacher teams are focused on the progress of students and responding to their instructional needs to go further or target areas of instruction based on actual student work and working as teams.
All right. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the last phase here. This last phase that our teachers work through with their professional learning communities is all about understanding their impact and closing a unit, whether it be in math, reading, or writing. Teams meet to talk about how students finished out the unit, what teachers did to help them grow, and then celebrating their wins. Our teachers take time to reflect on what went well and what opportunities are there in the future to influence student learning. During this last phase four, it's important to celebrate the growth and success of our students. So here you, you see just one way, our students were celebrating the end of a reading unit in class. It's kind of dark in the picture there, but you can see that their teacher actually invited them to bring in their blankets and flashlights and, and some of their favorite current books that they were reading and they got to have a little bit of a campout during, during readers workshop. I was, I was invited that day, so I actually brought a text of my own to join in with them and I got to read and I was able to listen to our students talk about their, their favorite characters and share some of their opinions about their own books too, to, again, to celebrate that end of the unit there. Next slide. So at Countrydale, my staff recently learned about the importance of creating goals as a team as opposed to individual goals. According to research by authors like John Hattie and Jenny Donahue and others, individual goals do little to foster joint work among teams. So my teachers have been working on a common focus or theme that they see as a need within their grade level. In turn, they're also improving their overall collective efficacy and increasing their level of collaboration. So here is an example from my fifth grade team. You'll notice how they identified and named a goal that we have written there in the middle, that each teacher on that team was really going to focus on. And then on the right-hand side, you can see the specific actions that they identified as, as a team. I did not tell them what they had to do, they had to determine that themselves. So while we're all continuing to refine our work and learning, this team decided to really hone in on phase two of the PLC framework, which is based really looking closely at student work as a grade level in order to determine if students are making progress, very similar to what you heard Mr. Nelson talking a little bit about. So we've shared information about the framework that we use in order to focus on learning and development of our high-performing teams. In the early stages of our professional learning communities, our teachers preview a unit looking at their big goals. They take the time to look at how students progress in relation to those goals and then they make instructional decisions to ensure all students are demonstrating growth and understanding of our standards. Some of the work our teachers are engaging in is new and some of it is not, but the important thing is that they are learning how to refine their work and really deepen their collaboration as a team while they continue to move through the phases of a PLC. So as you can imagine, our PLC framework consists of a cycle that is ongoing, as is our learning and that of our students and certainly of our teachers. So at this time, Mr. Nelson and Mrs. Shannon and I are excited to answer any questions that you might have about our presentation.
Anybody have any questions?
I have a question. So you're looking at student work closer, as you said, how, does that take the place of, you know, assessments and tests? Or how is it different than, I mean, that's how you looked at progress before, right? You give a test and you would know who learned what. Now we're doing something different? Or how is it different?
Those, the assessments and tests still would continue, but teachers are bringing that to their, their collaborative team time, but they're also bringing student work to look at and look at the different areas where they can see where student growth is happening or where it's not and then make a plan to help move kids closer to that end of the unit expectations. So that still continues, yes.
I think I can clarify Lena's question because I sort of had a similar question. Is the PLC framework that you described more about professional development and helping the teachers grow as teachers or is it more about in-classroom instructional practices? Is that current? Yeah. I think it's more the former, correct?
Right. Yes, the framework is really about, sorry. The framework is really about supporting our teachers and, and providing a framework for making instructional decisions. We have provided professional learning on the framework in order to improve in the ability to use it. Is that?
Dr. Berry, it's a, the framework is utilized to provide a process for when teachers gather before school time and determine today's focus is on fourth grade and we're in this character development unit, so it's not, so what are we going to talk about? What do you think we should do? It's, they're preemptive with a strategy, strategies going in based on the phases that the principals outlined and they have driving questions that'll help facilitate their discussion that lead to, so what's next for our kids? So what's next for me as the teacher? To make sure our kids meet the outcomes we expect.
Got it. What did this replace? What, was, was there just sort of loose framework before? Just sort of chat about?
Yeah, part of the coherence plan work from the last three years, this was some core strategy work that came out of each building to really tighten up that we know we have time, we have designated time for teams to come together, as Ms. LaPlante said, through joint work and, and rely on each other to build capacity. We needed a process and a framework. This isn't new, fangled work. It's taken place for years across districts. We just tightened our approach to it.
And how do we know it's working? The process, the PLC process?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think for me, what I've been noticing is even just a difference in practice when I'm in the classrooms and when I'm observing my teachers and certainly the conversations that they're having with their colleagues. I think about what my PLCs looked and sounded like when I was a first-year principal here in Franklin and it was, you know, sometimes it was more so focused on like, oh, I'm really having a, a struggling, you know, situation with a kid or hey, we really got to talk about our field trip that we have coming up, where now we're really focused on talking about our teaching.
Ultimately, our measurement is the forward exam at the elementary level. We progress monitor through MAP and Common Assessment. As Mr. Nelson said, we, we build inter-rater reliability to make sure we have consistent expectations and high levels of expectations across third grade through the district, fourth grade, you name the grade. And then we monitor that progress internally and then forward is our summative assessment when it comes to, is this with other factors? You saw there's use of literacy coaches in PLC, math coaches, and then the tieback to professional development days where we're refining practice of this process.
Thank you.
And just to follow up, you mentioned that they come up with tools and for kids and themselves. What, what, what's an example of that?
professional development days where we're refining practice of this process.
Thank you.
And just a follow-up, you mentioned that they come up with tools and for kids and themselves? What, what's an example of that?
So I think the one example that Mr. Nelson had shared was, it looked like a mini-anchor chart that you could take into a conference, and it had tips and strategies that, that readers could try when they're in that small group. So they could be maybe looking at the character in different ways or taking perspective. So those were some tips that were given. And so there, those are tools that students can use when they're reading independently, but it's also a teaching tool for the teacher to, to bring them together and say, this is something that we really need to work on, let's try it here in the small group, and then when you go off, take it with you, and then you can use it when you're working in your small group, um, independently, excuse me, as a reader.
So it's only good for that situation? It's not like saved for next year, I can reuse the tool?
Well, usually the tools are something that they can transfer in any book that they're reading, whether it's, you know, if they're reading any nonfiction book, they might be using that tool anytime that they go to read. Those are things that, they're kind of big goals that they can do all of the time, so...
Thank you.
For students, how can we, basically my question is, how do we integrate the data individual student approach with the PLC? Because when we look at the student body itself, but the individual student, some student might be lacking a little bit behind, as, you know, so how is the teacher able to take that approach of PLC to the basically neutralizing for the student itself?
So when, that's where, when the teachers are looking at the, the student evidence that they are pulling in, whether it's, again, math, exit tickets, or running records, or any sort of student assessment, they're planning for the different small groups that differentiate to meet the individual student needs, whether it's a group or even if there's an individual student who's struggling, I now know through this assessment, I'm going to set up what I'm going to do when I confer with that student this week to help push them to the next step. You may have noticed, and if I had it up there, on the, the student assessment pieces that were up there, student evidence, there was a plus delta chart. So that's where teachers are writing down whenever they're assessing children, they write like, what are their strengths and what are their next steps? So they're writing in that plus side, some of the things that the students are able to do, and then what would be a next step for the student for me to really focus on? So they're really researching their students when they're collecting that information, and then determining what's a big compliment, or what's something that I really need to point out to the student to build their confidence, and then really invite like, you know, would you like to try this? I think you're ready for this, and that's on that next step. And that's where they're really planning, what are the, the groups that they're going to need to move the students forward? Or again, what is like a mid-workshop for the whole group? Or what is even like an individual conferring for a student who's maybe struggling? And they do that as a team.
Thank you.
And didn't, one last question, you mentioned a team, right? How does, where does a special education teacher fit on that team? Because you mentioned the struggling student. Are they doing their work separately, or does, how do they work together?
The special education teachers, the cross-categorical teachers are all part of those collaborative teams. So when they get together, they talk about all of the students, and they talk about strategies that can work for all of the kids. So their expertise is a part of that conversation.
And sometimes you might find them in more than one grade level, too. So I might have a cross-cat teacher who's a part of a kindergarten team and a first grade team.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we going to talk though about reports at all that they provide, or not?
You can ask questions about the reports, yeah.
We can?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just, I know you focus on social-emotional learning, we have these surveys that we do, but the questions aren't the same across schools, right? Do you pick your own questions and what you focus on?
So the, in the fall, we give an overall survey that has the extensive list of questions to get a baseline and compare to prior years. And then the schools have the ability to pick certain statements that they're focused on or that tie directly to strategic action they're taking, and then they monitor those as a pulse survey on a more frequent basis, on a monthly basis or on every other month basis. So rather than give the entire survey every month to all students, they really hone onto some areas of focus that they're monitoring, and then they continue to use that as a gauge to readjust their actions or to, to kind of push their learning forward.
And since we're talking about it, so would you say that you use that survey less to sort of like drive significant change over the year and more to just sort of pivot and make fine-tune adjustments as the year goes on? Should I be looking for significant growth, or...
We, we would identify significant growth over multiple years as we were looking at that big survey data. Within a year, right, we're just looking for kind of minor fluctuations or upward trend, right, to help inform us. We've learned, you know, over the years that it, there's a danger in focusing on any one statement, right? If you, you overreact to one piece of data or a statement within a survey, and you start focusing all your attention there, pre-student three or four other areas start to drop because you've taken your attention off that, right? So, so we don't overreact to minor fluctuations, but we want to make sure that the overall trend is in a positive direction.
Thank you.
Would you say that it's, all this, the, sorry, the, the data that we're getting and, and the, the work that the teachers are doing in their teams, it seems as if we're, we're making it so that we can react more quickly to, to what's happening, rather than it happens in a month, we, we change things in a month, or we change things in two months, rather we change things every two weeks, or we change things every week. We can react more quickly to what's happening with this data, and that, that, would you say that's what's happening?
Yeah, certainly I'll let the team weigh in.
Sure. Yeah. You know, one of the things that kind of evolved within many of our schools was that we decided that it was actually better for our teachers to have their own focus groups with their classes, right? So while the survey helps us to really see like numbers behind some of these questions, our teachers can immediately, once they see that, they might hone in on like a high statement or a really low statement. And then later that day, they might talk to their team about, oh, this is what I heard from my kids, are you hearing similar things in third grade? What do you think we can do differently? Let's really tap into our social and emotional curriculum, and then we can kind of address it right then and there.
So, and to your point, Mr. Sprague, kind of outside just the realm of SEL, like, you can see the layers of data, right? You heard Dr. Reuter talk a little bit about it. Forward exam data, we get once a year, we get it in the summer, right? It, it kind of tells us over time how we're doing, the kinds of assessment they were talking about, the discussions that were happening in teams, it's more authentic and more real time, right? We're looking at student work that was just recently kind of produced, and we're able to then use that information to make adjustments and to make sure we're responding to needs. So it is a much more timely and authentic way of approaching the work than just simply analyzing assessment data from the three times a year with MAP or the once a year with Forward.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any other questions? All right, item B, 2021-22 health insurance. This is an action item, Mr. Millsor and Ms. Ellie Howson.
Yes, we've been working with Alex Bodry of the Horton Group on our health insurance plan for next year.
I'm so sorry, Jim, could you lean a little closer to your mic? It's hard to hear you.
Mr. Millsor.
Yeah, and I'm in charge of the mics. All right, we've been working with Alex Bodry of the Horton Group on our 2021-22 health insurance renewal, looking at fully insured plans as well as self-insured. And Mr. Bodry is with us tonight to tell us about the results of that.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Alex Bodry with the Horton Group. I am the lead consultant here for Franklin Public Schools. I'm going to be going over a brief overview of the health insurance market, what's going on in our world. We'll talk briefly about where Franklin has been over the last handful of years, and then we'll close with some recommendations for a strategy moving forward. In terms of the health insurance marketplace, trend or inflation on an ongoing basis, according to PricewaterhouseCooper, is about 6%. So a national average, we would expect your insurance claims to go up about 6%. Now, when we look at, and the highest area of growth in that area is prescription drug utilization, that's about 15%, specifically around specialty medications. So when you think of a specialty medication, think about if you've ever seen it on TV. If you've seen it on TV, those drugs are expensive, and that's, that's going to classify as a specialty-type medication. And there are some studies that would suggest that specialty RX utilization will account for about half of all prescription drug costs. So that's, that's a significant increase in cost that we are expecting to come in the coming years. The fully insured market as a whole in Wisconsin, first off, we only have a handful of carriers, so there's not a lot of different options to go to if we do need to go out to the market. Second, most of these carriers were in the ACA individual marketplace, and most of those carriers are now trying to get out or have gotten out because the individual marketplace was not as profitable as they had hoped it would be. So think of United Healthcare, Anthem, some of those larger carriers have got out. It is my belief that those losses have shifted to the employer side. The employers are now subsidizing the carriers in those marketplace, and that's why you'll see a higher trend number from those carriers. So for example, when I looked at your United Healthcare renewal, let's, let's ignore the fact that we did have a rate cap in place, but their, their trend number is about 10% and about 16% in pharmacies. So compare that to PricewaterhouseCooper, which is at 6% and 15%. So a little bit higher for those reasons with the individual marketplace. In terms of which carriers are aggressive and which are not, it tends to be cyclical. You will remember last year, when we were going through this process, I thought Humana gave us actually a rather fair renewal, but United Healthcare looked at your, your group and, and had a strong appetite for your risk, and that's why we were able to get that over 5% decrease in the rates. I think that is likely to continue. Every couple of years, it shifts on which carrier it is, whether it's WPS, Humana, Anthem, United Healthcare, they all kind of take their turn on when they're going to get aggressive on business based on how their book of business is running and, and where they would like to grow. So what I see from the majority of my fully insured groups is they're changing carriers every two to three years. You tend to get with a carrier, maybe you get a rate guarantee, and then that third year, you get a bigger renewal than is necessary from my standpoint. We go out to the market and we'd find a new carrier, and then we move. And that just happens to be the way it is. It's, it's not like it used to be where you, you're with a carrier for five, six, seven years, it's just, it, it's too much money at stake to stay put. So most of my groups are changing every two to three years. So then is there a shift to self-funding? And I, I would say yes. I think more and more groups are looking to take control over their, their health insurance fund. And I'm going to talk about the pros and cons of fully insured versus self-funded. But I do believe that moving to self-funded creates stability, at least with your network and your third-party administrator. Most of my self-funded groups, once they settle in with a third-party administrator, the company that will be on your ID card and the network of doctors that your folks can see, most self-funded plans don't change that. It's a very small percentage of the overall costs, and once you get a network that you appreciate from a access standpoint and a discount standpoint, most groups tend to settle in and stay with those, those providers for a very long time. So where has Franklin been over the last five years? Over the last five years, we've been with three different carriers, so it proves my point a little bit, right? Every other year, on average, we've been changing carriers. However, we have done a very good job of limiting our cost increase. The average yearly increase has been a 1.5% over those five years, and we've made some, what I would call moderate to minor plan design changes to achieve those goals. So think about small deductible increases, changes to office visit copays, prescription drug copays, et cetera. So we have made some minor tweaks along the way, but we've done a very good job of managing our costs. This year with United Healthcare, I mentioned earlier, we had a rate cap, so we did take a very large decrease in rates, which I don't get to deliver news like that very often. I was very thrilled to be here last year. However, I, I warned you that there wasn't an opportunity to have this rebound effect. And, you know, we were lucky enough to put that 9.9% rate cap in place to protect us, but we are facing that 9.9% rate increase. Our loss ratio on the year is about 106.7%. So think of the carrier, they want that to be, you know, 85 to 88%. So we're well above, you know, where their target is for our experience rating, and if we didn't have that rate cap, we'd probably be staring at a 15 to 20% increase, if not higher. So that rate cap did do what it was intended to do and protected us. Okay, so what are our options moving forward? Obviously, the first option is to accept the renewal and stay with United Healthcare at the 9.9%. However, if we remain fully insured, you know, I would expect to be with United Healthcare for next year, and the following year, we'd be back out to the market to look at other fully insured options. You know, if we're already 20 points or so above their target market, you add in 9% trend on top of that, which is what they're looking at, I mean, we may be looking at a 25, 30% increase for next year. So we'll likely be back out to the market in the hopes that another carrier would get aggressive for our business. I mentioned that we've been with three carriers over the last five years. I mentioned also that there's only a handful of carriers, so we're going to start cycling through these carriers, and you just hope that one has an appetite for your risk. With that comes disruption, not only on administration, but to your employees, getting new ID cards, going to their doctors to fill out new prescriptions. It can be a bit of a hassle to make these changes every year, both on administration and on your employee staff. And then lastly, the potential of facing double-digit increases. If the fully insured marketplace is going to look at trend of 10%, just think about what we spend in terms of healthcare dollars and, and do a 10% compounding interest. I mean, it's unsustainable to continue at that pace. So what are some of the pros of moving to a self-funded arrangement? I mentioned it earlier, but the big one is carrier and network stability. If we, if, if we go with, you know, a UMR or a different third-party administrator, it's likely that we'll be with that administrator for 10-plus years. It's, it's not very often that groups make changes in that space. We can lower our plan costs and increase benefits targeted around specific items. So for example, if we wanted to add clinical programs to our pharmacy program, where we can control, you know, what type of medications are being used, or, or, or different things, we can get creative with the plan design without impacting deductibles and co-insurance and those types of things, but yet offer a lower-cost alternative. So it gives us more creativity and more flexibility, you have more control, you, the district, has more control, and you can better manage your financial costs of the health plan. So a little bit on fully insured versus self-funding, and I, I went into great detail on this last year, but I do kind of want to hit the highlights on the differences. So being fully insured today, cash flow is very steady. You pay your monthly premium, it doesn't vary very much from month to month. Whereas when you're self-funded, your fixed costs, what you pay to an insurance company, decrease dramatically. So today, all of it goes to United Healthcare. Moving forward, only about 10 to 15% of your actual premium dollars would go to an insurance company. The rest of that money is set aside to pay for claims. So it gives you more of an advantage, because if we have good claims months, we get to retain those dollars. On the flip side, cash flow is going to be a little bit different, because it's going to depend on claims. The assumption of risk when you're fully insured, it's all on United Healthcare. For example, our loss ratio today is 107%. They lost seven cents on every dollar they took in, right? So we're, we are not making United Healthcare money at the moment. Whereas when you're self-funded, you take on a little bit more of that risk. Plan design, you are, when you're fully insured, you're limited to what United Healthcare or whoever the carrier is, has to offer. So you're limited to their deductible options, their co-insurance options, their pharmacy programs, you're, you're picking a program off the shelf. When you are self-funded, we are essentially now the insurance company, where we can get very granular and we can get creative with some of the options that we have, and we can control how the health plan is utilized down to the specific condition level. And when I say that, I don't mean like we're going to exclude something because Alex has a health condition. What I mean by that is, okay, we have a lot of diabetes manage, or utilization issues. Can we offer more, more programs to keep people reliant and, I mean, reliance, not the right word, proactive with their diabetes management? Can we make sure they're getting the right care, and can we reduce costs that way before those diabetic issues become more expensive? And then compliance, there are state regulations when you're fully insured, state premium taxes, which is about 2% of our premium that goes to the state of Wisconsin. Obviously, United Healthcare pays that, but they're charging that back to us. By moving to self-funded, we get out of the state regulations, we're now federally regulated, and you save a little bit on those tax dollars. So self-funded analysis, why do it? In a, in a recap here, there's lower fixed costs, so what we pay to insurance companies is going to drop dramatically. We can eliminate some of those fees and taxes, about 2% in the state premium taxes, and we reduce the insurance carrier charges and their profit margins. So think about United Healthcare, you know, they're, they're looking to make probably about 4 to 6% on all of their fully insured groups. By moving to self-funded, we would eliminate that profit margin and hopefully save those costs. Better management of variable claims costs. And then the reserves, so when I say reserves, at the end of the year, any money that is not used in the form of claims, we retain. Whereas today, if we were to have a better year, you know, United Healthcare retains those funds. So moving forward, we want to run and operate the health plan in a way where we can build those reserves up to help manage some of those cash flow issues. to help manage some of those cash flow issues. And then we can essentially become the profitable insurance company and retain those funds. And then lastly, just greater control over the delivery of healthcare and control over plan design. Okay, my last slide. There was a four-year cost estimation in the memo that was sent out. I just wanted to walk through how we got those numbers and what we're expecting over the next handful of years. So you can see the fully insured versus the self-funded increase. While we are expecting a slightly higher increase to go to self-funded this year, over that four-year period, you know, we're looking at potentially saving close to $1 million. And the main reason is with the fully insured piece, I mentioned we're already behind the eight ball a little bit with United Healthcare from where they'd like to see our group be on a profitability standpoint. That's only going to compound into next year. So if we remain with United Healthcare over the next four years, you know, I think the numbers we used are actually very generous at that 18% in '22, '23. And then we used a pure trend number at 9% for '23, '24. I think that's probably on the positive side, on a very conservative side. I think there's more potential for those numbers to be even higher, given where our current claims trends are with them. Where on the self-funded side, we can eliminate some of that trend. We can do some more creative things around the plan design, specifically pharmacy. You know, one thing I didn't talk about is the opportunity to get prescription drug rebates. Those will now come back directly to the district as opposed to going to the insurance carrier. That's a big opportunity for some cost savings. So you know, I think while there is a slight increase in year one, I think long-term financially, being self-funded, as this chart shows, would be more advantageous. So I think Jim was going to take it from there.
Right, so we are recommending that the district move to a self-funded health insurance plan for 2021, '22. I think we've covered most of this, but from a financial perspective, the first year will be a little bit higher cost, self-funded, due to the rate cap, basically. Otherwise, I think it would have been lower. After the second and third year, we will be to the point where self-funded will be less costly than fully insured. And our estimates show it to be over $900,000. In future renewals, we would expect to continue to be below cost on the fully insured market because we're not paying that profit. We're not paying any tax on this. We're able to work with the plan and we'll be using a lower inflation rate that's more in line with medical trend than anything else. So in the long term, self-funding puts the district in the best financial position and able to offer the plan into the future.
All right, I get to close. I'm going to talk just a little bit about it from the employee perspective as your human resources director. With self-funding, there certainly is, it involves an assumption of risk. And so with that risk comes a obligatory fiscal responsibility to manage and mitigate that risk. We offer benefits as part of a total compensation strategy. We look at it from that picture and we think about it from recruitment and retention of talented staff. When you go within that strategy, there are definitely key performance indicators that tell us if our strategy is working. Some of them come on the front end when you think about recruitment in terms of, am I, as I'm offering out positions, seeing a decline in offers based upon that total compensation strategy of which our benefit plan is a driver? Also, through our exit surveys, when staff leave us, we ask questions around our compensation strategy. And then you think about the staff that are here and retaining them. What do we see from a well-being and a satisfaction standpoint around the total compensation strategy? When we keep shifting carriers, it's very disruptive to employees. And as costs continue to climb and we have to push in with mitigation measures that really do hit them directly, either through the out-of-pocket costs that they play when they utilize the plan or the premiums that they contribute, is a disruption to them. One of the things that has been addressed here is the ability within the self-funding strategy to minimize that disruption by a commitment to a carrier that is going to give us greater information around the utilization patterns that we see on our plan in order to actually put in plan design structures that maintain high well-being and satisfaction from our employee base, but really go back to where I started in that obligatory fiscal responsibility we have to mitigate risk. So it allows us that ability, but it's not without management of the plan in a very intentional way to ensure that there's a balance between that fiscal responsibility and is it meeting our recruitment and our retention measures as part of our compensation strategy? Questions for us?
You know, one of the questions which I had is, being the field of medicine, insurance company usually assign a care coordinator for above-average users as such. Are you going to have something like that in a self-funded program?
I think, again, it would depend upon the data or the information we start to receive that we are absent right now in a fully insured environment to really determine if there are compliance programs that we should have in place, that we don't, if there are adherence programs that also are considerations, whether that's on the pharmacy side or the medical side. Is it potential? Certainly. Would I say that with absolute certainty today? No.
Yeah, those programs are certainly available though, like case management, utilization, you know, for high, what I would, what we call high-cost claim and serious medical conditions, care coordination. All of those programs are available, just like they are today through United Healthcare. They would be available through the third-party administrator.
And you certainly have different ways to design them in a self-funded plan than you do in a fully insured plan.
And, you know, looking at big companies like Google, and if you look at, they have these programs. For example, they give free salads to the employees, you know, just for healthy. If you meet this body weight BMI, you get so much of a kind of, you know, premium on the discount. If you're a smoker, you might have to pay a little bit extra, you know. Will we be able to implement or copy that kind of programs to kind of enhance, again, utilization and proper utilization of the resources?
It's a good question, Dr. Cohn. I think we're several years from looking at any type of an outcomes-based program like Google or some of the bigger companies have. And it kind of does come back to this ability to really have data. And it's not down at the individual data level. It's aggregate data that really talks to us about the trends we see on our plan, where we really do see the chronic disease states. How managed are they or aren't they? In order to determine the best type of primary care-focused wellness program that then leads to a path of time and trust with employees that we are focusing in on them from a care standpoint. Do I see us moving forward as we go into self-funding? Yes, but over time, not in an immediate sense.
When you were presenting on the relative risks and benefits of a self-funded program, you mentioned that, you know, one of the biggest risks is the risk of it itself. And so I'm wondering if you can just speak for a couple of minutes about what about our district suggests to you that we are able to tolerate that risk?
Sure, so the first thing is self-funded is a little bit of a misnomer. We are not going to be responsible for all of the claims that come through. We do purchase insurance for what we call specific instances. So for example, you know, we have a deductible on every member on the plan. Let's call it $125,000. So if someone goes into the hospital and has a very serious condition and ends up being $300,000 in medical bills, the district's liability is capped. So by looking at past experience and where we would set that deductible amount, we're comfortable with being able to manage those larger claims, knowing that our liability or the district's liability is capped at a certain amount. So we do have, you know, insurance coverage for those larger risks, if that makes sense.
Is there any liability of the stop-loss being, the stop-loss insurance going up so much that that becomes an issue?
So I'm going to answer it two different ways. One, if we have so many high claims amounts where our stop-loss insurance, you know, goes up dramatically, we're going to have problems regardless if we're fully insured or self-funded because that means our experience is way out of normal ranges. Secondly, you know, I talked about trend in the fully insured market. Stop-loss trend is about 15%. And you might be thinking, why would we move into arrangement where trend is 15% versus 6% or 10%? And the reason is, we're starting from a much lower dollar amount. So our premium today is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, around $8 million-ish. We're going to be paying a stop-loss carrier about $1 million. So even with a 15% increase, we're talking about a much smaller increase than we would be on a 15% increase over $8 million. So yes, insurance costs may go up, but really, when you're self-funded, the focus shifts less on the insurance product and more on the claims because that makes up 85 to 90% of what we're spending. So it's just a little bit of a different philosophy. And you know, with stop-loss carriers, we will switch that probably every year or every two years because it won't impact your employees. Your employees will never feel it. It's behind-the-scenes accounting and, you know, risk management. And there's a lot of them. You know, I mentioned there's like five fully insured carriers that are in southeastern Wisconsin. There's like 30 stop-loss markets that'll look at your risk. So it's much easier to move. It's much easier administratively to move. And your employees, from their experience, will never know that it's happening because the third-party administrator is what's important to them.
Are you looking at retirees as a separate group than your regular employees? Are you managing them separately or as one pool?
This is one pool at this point in time.
Is there any, does one tend to subsidize the other then? Is that something we want to do or? I'm not sure if you even know.
I mean, certainly as we move into self-funding, the disaggregation of the data is capable. And you typically are going to see a loss ratio that's higher on the retiree group based upon just their medical needs than you are on the active group. But there are already some mitigation measures in place in terms of how that retiree coverage looks into the future that were put in place years ago.
What are the numbers, retirees versus active?
I don't know.
I think the number of retirees is around 25 or 30. And we have over 400 employees on the plan. So it's a much smaller percentage of retirees to actives.
But they could drive your costs up.
What was that?
They could drive your costs up.
They could, they certainly could.
I'm looking at the chart that you provided that kind of does the math over the four years. I'm not sure quite why I understand that the self-insured is a 12.5% increase. What drives that initial bigger increase?
Our claims experience. So by moving to self-funded, we're taking that rate cap away because now we're moving the risk from United Healthcare onto ourselves. And in order to, you know, I mentioned the 106% loss ratio. In order to kind of right that ship, I mean, the district does need to increase rates. So that's the appropriate amount that we calculated for this time. That's why it's more, you know, the fully insured rate is capped. But if we didn't have that rate cap, we'd be looking at a much higher increase. So that's the difference there.
And looking at the chart, I see you have the fully insured bill going up 7.2%, not the 9.9%.
Yep, so there are some plan design changes that we are going to be implementing, whether we remain fully insured or self-funded. And when you make plan design changes, you're shifting the cost right from the plan back to the employees because their copays are going to go up and those types of things. So by implementing those plan design changes, the increase would go from 9.9% to 7.2% because we'd be increasing copays on a couple of items.
Wouldn't that also be reflected then on the self-insured side?
It was, and that's included in the 12.5% number.
So it would have been even more, 2%?
Correct, but, yes.
Right, it's important to remember on that that we're not paying enough this year in premium. So we're starting from a number that's too low, which we gladly accepted because we're saving about $460,000 this year. But then when you look at the increase, we never should have been as low as we are. So we have to make that up first and then have an increase on that. That's part of why, that's part of why the increase looks larger there.
Are we managing this as a separate fund on the books or are you?
Not a separate fund, but it's separated within the fund so that it runs separately. And the reserves that we had are held separately for this as we build them up over the first few years so that those are what are used for claims.
Prior to building up that fund, will we have to access monies from the general fund to pay out claims? No?
No, so you know, if you think about your normal health claim, you go to the doctor's office today. It normally takes about 60 to 90 days to work itself through the insurance engine. And when you move to self-funded, we get the benefit of that. So other than prescription drug claims, which happen right away, all of your medical claims are going to take until about September, October to work themselves through. So those first couple of months, we're going to be putting the premium in to fund that account without really paying a whole lot. And then as we go forward, it'll kind of correct itself. But we should have enough reserves built up those first couple of months to get the plan rolling without having to put any additional money into that account.
And how many years of data before you say, "I'm pretty comfortable that this is where our claims live"?
So, you know, we've been the consultant with Franklin for, I don't even know how long prior to when I started, six years ago. So we've had a pretty good historical grasp on this. We used 24 months of data in our analysis. But that said, moving into self-funded, if that's the direction we go, this is a long-term strategy. This is not something that we would recommend you get in and then try and get out of next year. It's not that easy. So this is a long-term financial decision.
Also, Jim, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I think there are, most of the neighboring districts like Enbloc, they are self-funded. Am I right?
Yes, out of the eight districts in the area that we meet with routinely, six of them are self-funded. And there are only two, including ourselves, that are still fully insured. And we've seen this over the years that more and more districts have gone to self-funding, even districts smaller than our own.
Anybody else have any questions? All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve changing the district health insurance to self-funded plan in 2021, '22 with the recommended plan design changes.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, youth mental health report and enhancing social and emotional skills in students grant, Ms. Cody.
Okay, good evening. I'm happy to close the show here tonight. I'm going to let Dr. Cohn just get the visuals set up here. Am I good to go? Okay. So this evening, I am here just to share a few highlights with you about how we support our students' mental health. In the fall, I provided a more comprehensive report and I'll do that again in the fall of 2021. So tonight, I'm going to talk about, just quickly, review of some of the universal practices we have in place, provide an update on the youth mental health first aid training that we provide. And that was originally funded by our safety grant. Provide an update on our partnership with CPA, which is our onsite mental health clinic provider. And then also share some new information with you regarding a mental health grant, or not mental health grant, social-emotional grant that we've had in place for actually two years. So this is a reminder of So this is a reminder of the vision that the, uh, social emotional learning committee developed as we began to, um, develop our social and emotional plan three years ago. And so every time we update our plan and make decisions on behalf of our students, we re-ground in this vision. So on this slide, I have an update of just what we've been doing regarding the comprehensive, um, social and emotional learning. So everything that we do on a universal level for all of our students K-12, or for K-12 actually. So I know there's a lot of text, um, on this slide, but I'm proud to say that much of this, again, is consistently implemented across the system. So we have focused on, um, really the inner circles, um, which really, those two inside rings focus on what happens in the classroom and at the school level. So we, as a district, have, um, developed an understanding of what really is important to provide a comprehensive, um, social emotional learning program. And, um, within that, all of our staff members have learned about the five competencies. So those are those little pieces of pie in the middle there. Um, so they've learned about what the competencies are and, um, what they mean for our students and how important it is for us to provide opportunities for our students to learn about the competencies, have opportunities to practice, and then how important it is for us to also model those competencies. We also see consistent application of the signature practices, which I think you've also experienced here, um, a few times at the school board meetings, but, uh, welcoming rituals and also, um, optimistic closure. We see, um, in many classrooms, they start the day with community circles, which, um, really builds on, um, a welcoming, um, classroom environment where we have really solid, secure, trusting relationships, um, peer-to-peer, as well as, um, building those relationships, uh, with teachers. And then finally, we, we are focusing on the integration of the five competencies and then the practices. Like how does it support, um, the social and emotional development of our students as well as supporting, um, their academic growth? Restorative practices, um, has been, has also been part of our approach and, um, the restorative practices, it's not really been consistent, but we've had many staff members really learn about how to help students, um, rebuild, uh, relationships, work through, um, kind of some conflict resolution and there are lots of different opportunities for that where you can learn how to solve those, um, issues that come up in a classroom in a more authentic manner. And then we, um, this year we added explicit teaching, um, at the KA level using the second step resources. And, um, all of our staff members have learned about trauma, trauma-sensitive schools. So the piece, when I think about what really does make me proud, um, I mean, all of this does, but, um, I think it's really unique that here in Franklin, all of our staff members have engaged in learning about, um, what's important for social and emotional support of our students and the trauma-sensitive schools. So every department, um, people serving in multiple roles, that's really, um, important again, that we all share those values and we understand and that really impacts the relationships that we develop with students and the way that we approach and interact with students on a daily basis. So some of the additional supports that we have been able to brought, provide our students are listed here on the slide as well. So part of our proactive approach is to provide youth mental health first aid training. You've heard me speak about that before. Um, originally this started, um, it was funded through our safety grant and we currently have three staff members, um, in the district who are trained to be trainers. So last year was the first year that we provided training for staff and, um, we continued this year. So over the course of the first two years of providing training, we've been able to train over 100 staff members and 14 community members. And amongst the community members, uh, we had fire and police, um, as well. So our goal going into next year is to, um, train an additional 150, uh, staff members. So it's a lofty goal, but we've had a lot of people express interest. And it's really about just recognizing the signs, um, in students, in adults, um, and how to help, help them access the help and the assistance that they need. Um, so just recognizing the signs. Um, and then on the other side of the screen, one of our responsive, um, supports has been our ongoing relationship with clinical psychology associates. So last year was the first year that we provided this service on campus and, um, it was well-received and they have been able to continue the services even when we switched into a virtual environment. And, um, so they have been flexible to really work with families to continue to provide the services. So again, over the course of, um, our first two years, you can see we have serviced 144 students, um, 70 were discharged and 74 are continuing, um, those therapeutic relationships. And, um, I should also mention as well that we started with two, um, therapists and we have grown to five. So they have been able to respond as our needs, um, have, have, have grown. So, um, in addition to the work that they're continuing to do directly with families, we're also working on, really working, um, engaging them more in our process moving forward as we're developing, um, continuing to develop our, uh, mental health pathways. So they just were part of a meeting, uh, with all of our student services staff on Tuesday of this week, just talking about, um, again, what, what do we need in terms of communication and how can we just continue to work, um, more closely to meet the needs of students? So, um, those are two key things I'd like to highlight. And then recently, um, our student services staff engaged in, um, an assessment of, of our system. So, um, the first thing that I highlighted here is just, um, we wanted to identify the strengths of our system and then also look for opportunities for growth. And so we had, um, several members of our team engage in the Wisconsin School of Mental Health Needs Assessment and we also looked at current student data. So some of the data that we accessed was the, um, Wisconsin Youth Risk Behavior Assessment and that's an assessment, um, that our sixth through 12th grade, 12th grade, right, yeah. Six through 12th grade students take usually on an annual basis. So we looked at what those needs were and then we looked at this mental health assessment, um, that really outlines if you have a comprehensive, robust program for your students, like these are the components you should have. So we looked at the data and our strengths and, um, what our needs were. And then, uh, basically after that, we prioritize the themes as, um, as a system, what do we need to work on K-12? And then also what might be really important to hone in on maybe at the elementary level or at the high school level? And then based on the needs and the strengths that we identified, we also decided to apply for, um, mental health grant. So we applied early May and we'll find out early July if we will be awarded the grant funding. And the grant is a two-year grant. So if we're awarded the funding, I'll certainly provide more detail, um, in terms of what that would mean for our services. So as I mentioned earlier, um, we looked at our strengths and, and I know there's a lot here and you read the report, so I won't go through everything. But, um, with a, a K-12 comprehensive, um, mental health referral pathway, there are certain components that you need to have in place. So we did find collectively as a K-12 group that we, um, had strengths in the foundations or that universal level. Um, when it comes to that next level of really those selected supports, again, we identified some consistent themes. And then, um, we also reviewed what we provide in terms of those intensive supports, um, for just those fewer students. And then how we address all of those needs are really, um, we look at like an entire care system, like how we deliver all of those services. So you can see we had a lot of strengths that we can build on. And then our opportunities for growth, uh, we identified many areas, but, um, consistently we just identified a few key places that we can, um, further develop. So one area is looking at how we use our data. So, um, we, we continue to hear about data, um, and Dr. Cohn mentioned a little bit earlier as well as the elementary, um, principles as far as how we're trying to gather some of our engagement data. Um, but we, we know that we need, um, a, a bigger system in terms of a universal screener and then also progress monitoring. As we're identifying students to provide services, how do we know that we're effective with the interventions and how do we know then when to release those students, um, as well? So, we are going to focus on, on, um, researching potential uni- universal screeners, um, what's the implementation process, what kind of data do we gather from that? And then, once we gather the data, we need to be able to respond appropriately. So that leads to that second bullet. Um, we have, um, we recognize that we have a lot of things in place in terms of the universal supports for all students, but we know that, um, depending on the needs, students may need, um, small groups or one-to-one, um, just to help, you, you can think about anxiety or, um, depression, like different, different things that our students are dealing with, um, family loss. So when we recognize the needs in our students, we need to be able to have, um, a consistent, um, toolkit or a place that we can go in terms of, um, research-based or evidence-based practices. So we have some tier-two interventions that we know are effective with our students, but with all of this, it's really about consistency as a system. So we recognize that maybe elementary was really strong in one area, but the high school really felt that they didn't have enough to support their students. So all of this is really thinking about, um, the consistency that we're able to provide our students in terms of identifying, like, the data we're using, um, the access that they have to high-quality interventions and high-quality support, whatever that may look like. And then also, um, what's the process that we utilize as a system at each level in order to just put together the best plan for students? So, um, so those are some of the highlights in terms of places that we want to grow. As we looked at, um, some of those areas, we did, again, like I mentioned earlier, um, decide to focus on, um, applying for the mental health grant. So the funds from that grant will help us with our work in these two areas. And then finally, um, in the part of the report, I did include some information about the ES3 grant. So before we transition to that, I'll just ask if you have any questions up to this point.
I have less of a question and more of a thought, just as a parent, as you're looking at your opportunities for improvement in terms of accessing the system. I just know that, um, both as a parent and as a pediatrician, when you are, uh, dealing with a child with mental health needs, you often feel lost and alone. So as much as you can, I don't know, make parents aware of everything that's available to them and how they can access it and then what they can expect going forward.
Yep.
Um, that would be great.
Yeah, thank you, um, Dr. Beer. That is one additional, um, step that we identify too, that we need, like, all members of our school community to know, um, how to navigate that system. So staff members, parents, um, students as well. So we know that's, that's, that's a key part of, of it. So thank you for mentioning that.
How much money is this grant for? And like, so for example, if you don't get the grant, is there a way that funding might be available?
Mm-hmm. Um, so the grant is, um, it's a two-year grant and each year, um, when I totaled it all up, it was around 65,000 per year. If we, if we don't get the grant, we will still move forward with, um, the work because it's important to our system, but it just may impact, um, the pace, um, or, you know, maybe the number of student, or the number of staff members being trained, you know, that we might just have to go a little bit slower. Um, but it's, again, like I said, it's still important work, but, um, having the grant would certainly move things along much quicker for us, so.
And I'll just ask one more question real quick. With the community members and the, and the first aid training, are you planning to advertise that? Are you gonna focus just on like police and fire and specific community groups or how would you get more community members involved?
Yeah, um, we would probably connect with, um, the, um, park and rec, um, department as far as trying to advertise. And there are some community organizations that we have partnerships already, um, so we, you know, might start there as well. So we haven't, we really reached out to like police and fire initially, just because we knew that that was important. You know, we've got a great partnership with them already. So, yeah, that'll be a, something for us to consider though. So. Any other questions? All right. Well, I'm happy at this point, um, to introduce, um, Haika Logic. She's been in the district for, for several years. She's one of our, um, system specialists in special education. Uh, it's always a mouthful to say that, but I'm excited to have Haika here to share some of the work that she's been doing through another grant. We are two years into our ES3 grant and I thought it was just time for her to share some of the good things that are happening. So I, um, I'm just gonna turn it over to her at this point.
Sounds good. Let me get this a little closer. Thank you for the opportunity. Um, as Christine had mentioned, I've been, um, in the district as, working as a special education system specialist for 30 years. In fact, uh, Dr. Miller was the one who hired me when she was still a principal at Robinwood. Um, and I'm also a, a, a parent of a student who went through the system and a resident of Franklin, so I'm, I'm happy to be here to speak with you tonight. Um, the grant, the ES3 grant stands for E, stands for emotional, social, S stands for social and three represents the three years. The intent of the grant, which we, uh, were awarded two years ago, that we're in our second year right now, is really outlined to help support the social and emotional learning of students with really complex learning needs in the area of social and emotional. There's, so there's students that do have IEPs. What we have done is we have targeted students, um, this being our second year, I think we've tar, uh, we're up to seven students now, eight students this year, um, that really have, um, needs that require a team approach. And the, the way that the grant supports us is they provide through a coaching model. So Christine and I both are coached from the state, you know, through state resources to work with teams and coach at the team level. Um, and in fact, we had our last meeting today, so we're just looking at wrapping up our second year, as I had mentioned. And, um, we're looking at developing a team, a multidisciplinary team within each children that's wrapped around each child that we, we target. Um, and we use evidence-based practices that we're coached around. So we're hopefully increasing our toolbox for work, for kids who probably typically don't respond to our, um, universal, um, support, or maybe they need something more, something different. Um, and so that's where the evidence-based practices really come in. And then of course, once we just determine a goal for the student and, um, match up those evidence-based practices, we get into a habit of coaching. We have monthly meetings for the entire team and then I will go in and coach individual teachers, um, you know, uh, usually every other week or so I'm in the buildings and checking in and we're collecting data to make sure that things are moving in the right direction. And also we're, a big component of the go, of the grant is to, uh, enhance parent, um, engagement or family and community engagement. So they're also an important part of the work that we do through the team process. So up there on the screen now, you can see the goal, which again highlights the evidence-based practices and the database decision-making. Um, but I think the important thing to point out on this, um, slide is that the, the focus of one of our core values being on equity. And so when we did our equity audit, one of the pieces of data that, or a few of the pieces of data that we saw was that our students with disabilities are overrepresented, um, in exclusionary, um, practices sometimes. So for example, some of our students aren't in the general classrooms as much as their peers are, some of them are having to be removed for seclusion or restraint reasons. Um, some of them are attending alternate programs outside of the school district. So those were where we saw some overrepresentation, um, of our students with disabilities. In terms where we saw underrepresentation, where students with disabilities not participating to equal degrees or, uh, proportionately in extracurricular activities and, and things like. to equal degrees or proportionately in extracurricular activities and things like that. So one of the things that is inherent in the goal is to really focus on developing those practice and beliefs that will help level out that equity in light of what we saw through the equity audit. So you can see three of the, well, we have five teams. You can see three of the teams up above, and if you notice that in each of the pictures, there's they're multidisciplinary. So we have a gen ed teacher working collaboratively with a special ed teacher, related service providers, the building administrator is on every team. And the reason we do this is so that we can scale it up, that we can grow up our grow up and grow out our practices. Each each team also includes a school psychologist, which is a really important role, so that we can try to maintain the systems that we're creating through the work that we're doing. We also have educational assistants and parents as well, because really what we're trying to do is really develop those belief systems and skills to create those equitable outcomes for all, for the kids that we're targeting and hoping to grow those out. This is my favorite slide. So I just, you know, through the data that we do collect, and that is something that is a requirement of the grant, and it looks different for every team depending on what the goal and what the situation is, but these were a few notable outcomes that I think address that equity issue again. So for example, at Ben Franklin, our target student there, last year, he required 44 incidents of seclusion and restraint were documented for him because his his behavior was unsafe. So this year, in working with the team and working with evidence-based practices, the parent is a part of the team, we're meeting monthly, we've seen a 91% increase. He's only needed four, had four incidents of seclusion and restraint this year. Not only not only is that, are we seeing a decrease in his need for seclusion or restraint, which, you know, are prohibitive practices, and we really don't like to do that, we've seen an increase in his positive behaviors in terms of his coping strategies and being able to engage with peers more and staying in that regular classroom more often. So, you know, while one's going down, of course, the other's going up, and it's just been a very awesome success story. For Robinwood, I wanted to highlight some qualitative data, and so you'll see there, and I would invite you to view this if you haven't already on your own time. It's just a brief video of a parent of whose child is one of our target students at Robinwood. And again, the situation there was a little quite different, but the the student was only attending with us half days because he was going to therapy the other half days. And through our work with the ES3, we kind of talked, you know, formed a relationship and a, you know, a team with a parent. And over time, we, he developed enough trust with us to say, and started to see positive outcomes, to say, you know what, I see better things happening at school than I see in therapy. So he's, we slowly convinced him to increase the time to, you know, to fuller days, and then COVID hit, so we didn't quite get to the full day. But nonetheless, you know, he's really doing well, and he's also increasing his independence at home as a result of that. So that's what the the highlight of the video shows there, and I think it really shows a sense of of trust and really that that parent engagement piece. Countrydale, our ES3 team there, I, the key word I think of there is persistence. We had a, again, a young student who needed quite a bit of seclusion and restraint as a result of some unsafe behaviors. And we increased his engagement from, I don't have the percentage actually of the increased engagement, but we also decreased his seclusion and restraints from 32 to 16, so basically almost brought it down by half. So these are just a few of the outcomes I wanted to share with you to highlight the power, you know, of some evidence-based practices that are happening and the power of the team and dedication, so. Thanks, Nick. So then, just, I kind of alluded to some of this before, but just, you know, thinking about we're in our final year next year, and we're really going to focus on how do we build out, build up and out these practices now so that, you know, they, we can benefit and broaden the scale of and the scope of what we're doing? So one of the things we're doing is we're shifting, the first year we had two teams, now this year we have five teams, and next year we're going to expand our teams to Forest Park, the high school in Southwood Glen, so that every school will have an opportunity to have a team and and work through this process so that hopefully they can sustain it and maintain it for the following years. Also, we're finding that the more we're using these evidence-based practices that are helpful, and we're sharing out that work across buildings and, you know, across the ES3 grant, we did a share out, a combined share out at the end of this year. We're hoping that those will catch on more, not just for kids with, that are part of the ES3 grant, but for all kids, just to broaden our toolbox and expand our use of those evidence-based practices that we know can really be highly effective for students. The other thing is I'm working closely with Christine on the SEL work that she's doing so that we can make sure that we're integrating the work that we're doing with the ES3 grant, with the universal work that we're doing within the district. So that's pretty much what I had to share with you. Thank you for the opportunity, and does anyone have any questions for me?
Thank you for doing a great job. Thank you. I think that's a very important part, you know, especially doing, looking at a national aspect and a state aspect and the district aspect, you know. So thank you for doing a great job. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
All right, item E, approval of the 2021-22 Board of Education meeting dates. Dates are fairly similar to what they have been in the past, the second and, the second and fourth Wednesday of the month, with the exception of November and December, which we only have one meeting, and the summer. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the 2021-22 Board of Education meeting dates as presented.
So moved.
It's a second from the trail. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 10, personnel and policy, policy 6740, guidance and counseling program. Mrs. Larson?
Thank you. This is an action item. We are seeing this policy because it was last reviewed in 2015. The main change to this policy is the definition of our guidance counseling program. The new definition of our guidance counseling program offers a more comprehensive description and emphasizes equity in the access to rigorous and relevant education and opportunities for all students. I would be looking for a motion to approve the revised policy number 6740, guidance and counseling program.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Board liaison reports. Anybody? Mrs. Wachowski?
I did attend the SWSA meeting. I did share with you a summary slide via email. As we know, the state budget's underway, and now is the time to make our connections. And I was just wondering, I don't know, Judy, if you're planning any connection, I mean, you were also at the meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And I think the important thing is that, my understanding is, if the state does have money, there is money available, and this would be a time to really, I think, push for that special education change in percent. That would be something that I think we could support. I don't know how you would propose doing something.
Right. We did, of course, submit our testimony to the Joint Finance Committee regarding that. I think Ms. Wachowski, as the liaison or for government relations, I think you and I could sit down and talk further about how we'd like to reach out to Senator Bradley and Representative Skoronsky.
Okay. If everybody would just want to bring it up as a group, so I would be happy to do that with you.
Anything else, SWSA?
I think you already reported that our legislation's moving forward.
Anyone else? I did put the new liaison assignments out. I don't know if we generally post those somewhere else.
They'll be in the board docs library.
So those school, the school ones will start July 1st-ish or in the summer at some point?
Yeah, more likely August, when all of our leadership team is back from summer.
I do have something to mention. I did go to Southwood Glen last week and got a tour of the school from Dr. Mulberry and got to see a lesson in a fourth-grade classroom, a science lesson. I've been interested in Project Lead the Way from when Dr. Reuter helped introduce that into the elementary system, and it it looks really good in practice to me. They, the kids seem much more engaged, and it just seems to be a better program generally. So I enjoyed that lesson, wanted to mention that. Also, CISA, CISA 1 Annual Convention is Tuesday, May 18th, at Silver Spring Elementary School in Sussex. I will be attending. Anybody else is welcome to attend as well. If you would like to, just let me know. And that's all for that. Does anybody else have anything for liaison? All right, school and community engagement reports. I guess I just gave one. Anybody else?
Well, my school is Pleasant View, and I'd just like to echo what Dr. Miller said, wishing Mr. Fekler well. I'm proud to say that he was one of my children's student teachers, and then ultimately became my son's classroom teacher, and I always admired Mr. Fekler's kind, gentle manner. It was very important, working with children. So I wish him well.
He will be a loss, but I agree with you. He was fantastic employee. Anyone else? Item 11, school board meeting debriefing. Does anybody have any comments?
Yes. I always thought that the protocol in responding to emails that we get should come from the president and the superintendent. And one individual during the comments said that only two people did not respond to his email, Linda and Alan. And if we allow, if we all respond to emails, we are going to give a lot of opinions, and we are going to very much muddy the water. And I'm even concerned about a walking quarrel, depending on how the response goes out. So is that the protocol, or is it not the protocol, that the president and superintendent respond to these emails?
It's my understanding that that's, it's my understanding that that's a protocol, and that's, that's what I would expect. I did see there were a number of emails that were sent to individuals, and I don't know what the protocol's been in the past of getting those. I got a lot of them forwarded to me and I, from you, for instance.
Yeah.
I have, when I responded, I've basically been saying, thank you for engaging, I'm listening, Dr. Sprague will, or Mr. Sprague or Dr. Miller will respond on behalf of the board. Is that, do you think that that's appropriate?
I think what what I may do is provide you some information from the Wisconsin School Board Association around this, that drafted by attorneys and good advice. So I will provide that to you, and then if you want further discussion, we would make that an agenda item for discussion. But thank you for bringing it up.
Okay.
Thanks, and I think that's something that we'll talk about in the orientations as well, both Dr. Khan and Dr. Beer will have this week. Anyone else?
I give our students credit for speaking up, and this was a fairly hostile environment to come into tonight, for students to get up in front of a big crowd and speak their mind, what, you know, whatever side of the issue they were on. I give our students a lot of credit, and actually, I think it speaks to the district, you know, and their, I mean, parent support and everything else, which is that they feel comfortable enough to come into a room of crowded, you know, crowded room of people and really speak up. I was, I was impressed with our students.
All right, future agenda items. Tobacco poster winner presentation, principal plan, excuse me, principal action plan update from Southwood Glen and Pleasant View, technology report, communications plan update, board retreat discussion. How far do I have to move?
I think the, I know the board retreat discussion is at the May meeting. I can't recall if the CISA contract is at the May meeting or the June meeting, but you're starting to enter. I know item H is the June meeting, I and J is the June meeting. I just don't remember exactly if the CISA contract comes in the end of May or the beginning of June, to be honest.
Thank you. So CISA contract, SWSA agreement, and, and as all, I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned at 9:06.